Clap once. Thank you. This board meeting of the Board of Education for August 10th, 2021 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Tonight, we will begin by voting on the 2021- 2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Portland Federation of School Professionals. Next, we will receive the results from the Health and Safety Audit that was done this spring, followed by a back-to-school update that will go into more details on the health and safety protocols being developed to safely bring students back to school. As of July 26th, Multnomah County Health Department strongly recommends wearing a mask when indoors around people you don't live with, whether vaccinated or not, and this applies to everyone five years old and up. Just yesterday, the county chair announced that wearing a mask indoors is mandatory, effective August 13th. That's this Friday. Even though that mandate is not yet in force, for the safety of our employees and those who choose to attend in person, we are requiring that all in attendance tonight wear a mask. I appreciate, I'm seeing a lot of masking. I do appreciate that. Thank you. So, we're going to begin with the board consent agenda. Pardon me just for a moment. Members, if there are any items you would like to pull for discussion, we will set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda? Board members, are there any items you would like to pull from the consent agenda? I just was in the wrong, I was in the wrong meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Director Brim Edwards moves, and I didn't hear who seconded it. Director Constam seconds.
How could you miss that?
Well, I, I'm trying to get my ears trained, so I'm trying to go by voice. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, there's just one item I just want to call out. It's the K5 Spanish Dual Language Immersion by Literacy Resources that are coming before us, and this is, it's about 1.2 million, and half of that is coming from the bond. I just want to, once again, thank the voters for passing this historic bond because it allows us to get resources that we've never had. My kids were in a dual-language program, and when I look at the resources that we'll be able to get to support students who are in DLI programs, this is going to be just a fantastic new resource. So, thanks to the district staff who went through the curriculum process for the adoption, and also to the voters for paying for this.
I had a single comment, and that was to ask if we could add a column on expenditure contracts to ask to, so we could see if any of the providers were women-owned or minority-owned businesses. That would just be a checkmark that we could know, follow where we're spending district resources for our own edification. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment? Oh, I believe that's for the next item, for the Kairos lease. It is on the consent, okay. Ms. Ladd? For safety. We know you're an expert at keeping your, we can hear you very well. So, we thank you for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your comments. Public import, input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our job here is to actively listen, and to that end, I would ask each of you to tuck your phone away during testimony so we can give our full attention to the people in front of us, and I'll go first.
All right. For the record, my name is Kali Thorne Ladd. This is my first public testimony with a mask on. I hope you can hear me. And my first public testimony in person, so it's great to see all of you chaired to pass, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today. As all of you know, we have been on a journey with you as Kairos, a journey with some of you longer than others, and it has had its ups and downs, and some dark turns and ravines, and yet, we are on a hilltop on the other side, and we see light. Our mission at Kairos, many of you know, was born out of a desire to see Black children in particular, but all children really succeed and thrive, not just academically, but socially, emotionally, and culturally. We wanted every child to know that they were seen and valued and that they belong. And we wanted Kairos to be woven into the fabric of Portland Public Schools. That was important to us, and for a long time, it felt like that was true by name, but not in reality. And today, I feel like you see us, that you are including us in the fabric of PPS, and tonight, it feels like we belong, and I am so grateful for that. So, I see us, I had a vision when I was working on my talking points of just like the people marching in civil rights, linked, armed, and armed. I know many of you care deeply about equity, and equity cannot be achieved unless we are linked, armed, and armed, moving forward towards justice and towards equity. So, I hope that we can do so as Kairos, even though I am leaving Kairos, I will continue to serve and be involved at the organization and on the board, and we hope to continue this journey to help ensure Black children thrive, Brown children thrive, all children thrive within this district and are seen and valued. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Nelson?
Good evening. For the record, Chris Nelson, founding board member of Kairos PDX, which goes back to 2012. I am the current chair of the Real Estate Committee and owner of Capstone Partners, a Portland-based commercial real estate developer. Chair to pass and members of the board appreciate the opportunity to be here. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your partnership. My prior testimony, as many of you know, has been more acrimonious, and tonight, it's really a pleasure to be here to actually talk about something super positive that's happened. Our journey to occupy this building actually started, for many of you who might not remember this, but we wrote a letter of interest to lease the Humboldt School seven years ago in March 2014. And from day one, when we started our journey to look for a facility, I asked our leadership team, "Where would you like to be?" And it was pretty clear that Humboldt School was the place we wanted to be, and so, that's why we fought so hard for it for so long. There's a lot of reasons for that, and it feels like home. And a lot's happened over the last seven years, as Kali so eloquently pointed out, and so it's nice to be at this point and really feel like a true partner, and that partnership is reflected in our agreement, and doesn't feel so much like a landlord-tenant agreement, which I think is really important to us. 2020 was challenging for many reasons, in particular, the murder of George Floyd, but the Black Lives Matter movement has served, in my view, as a catalyst for prioritizing Black children and families in this community, in particular at PPS. And there were some positives last year with the bond measure passing, and in particular, prioritizing Jefferson High School for a full modernization. Obviously, the Center for Black Excellence is a piece of that, and Kairos has a part of that. And so, we're so happy to be part of the system and to be part of this, partner with Portland Public Schools. And I think it's important, this lease in and of itself, with the racial equity policy that PPS has, but the modified real estate policy that takes into account racial and social equity as it considers transactions for leases and other items, and I think that's recognized in this. So, I'll wrap it up. Just wanted to say thank you, and in particularly, Liz Large has done a great job helping us document things. Amy and Julia, you've been supporters for a while, and I look forward to getting to know the new board members, as we, as Kali said, hope to be long-term partners, and we really appreciate the opportunity now to have a long, secure future at Humboldt School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Alika Gardner. I'm a co-founder, current Chief Education and Culture Officer at Kairos PDX, and I echo the people before us. It's such a pleasure to be here on such a positive occasion, and sort of demarcation of our relationship. As Kali mentioned, when we started Kairos, it was with an explicit vision around children thriving and being their very best selves, particularly our Black and Brown children. It has been an honor to walk out that vision in the heart of the Black community. The Albina community has life and roots for our families. My husband tells stories each time that we venture into the neighborhood, be it a grandparents' house, community gathering places, summer shenanigans in the neighborhood. And now, my children also are rooted and have connections in that community through Kairos. Rooting and grounding supports growth and health. This is a step in the right direction for racial justice. This is a step toward beloved community coming together with a greater vision for equity. Thank you so much for taking this tremendous step.
Thank you. Are we done with public comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, sorry. Oh, now, now you can hear me. Thank you. For the consent agenda?
Oh, no.
I'd like to say a few words. Sorry, I didn't realize this was going to be on the consent, on the consent agenda.
Okay. It's a consent agenda?
It, we can always speak on items that are on the business agenda. I'm not calling it, pulling it out for a separate vote, because I think it's worth noting that we're voting on this tonight. It's not just any other contract. And I want to thank the Kairos community for staying with us, because one of my first board meetings in 2017, this room was packed, and that was for, I think, a, just a short-term lease extension, and we've come a long way since then, and I think I want to acknowledge that. One of the things that happened last year is we did very explicitly look at our preservation, maintenance, and disposition of district real property, which sort of sets the rules for how we lease and if we're going to sell buildings, and we had a very restrictive policy, and we deliberately went in this past year and said, "There may be cases in which we decide to use our physical assets that we have as a district to leverage a greater good." And it's not just about preserving the assets for a particular use that we might have imagined, but also to think about how we can use those assets really in service to our community. And so, we made several changes that allowed us to take into consideration things other than just whether somebody's going to pay market price. And there were two things that we added, which we can offer below-market terms, which is what we're doing in this case, because it can, because we've decided that it confers significant benefit to the district or its students, and those benefits substantially outweigh the cost. And then, second, the communities being served by the other party include a substantial portion of underserved students, students of color, students whose families qualify for free introduced lunch, students with special needs, emerging bilingual students or LGBTQ students. So, that policy change really enabled us to take tonight's action, and it builds on a whole host of other things that have happened this last year, whether it was the bond, as been referenced earlier, or the resolution that we passed, giving Albina Vision Trust the right of first offer for this building, setting of our board goals that focus on Black student achievement. And tonight, I think we get to make a long-term commitment, so previous votes were really short-term lease commitments, and tonight, that's very different. This is a long-term commitment to the partnership with Kairos. I think it's also worth noting that in addition, this lease agreement provides a right of first offer if the district ever decides to sell. So, I'm going to be supportive and also just want to acknowledge and thank the Kairos community for moving us, sometimes moving us along on our journey when we weren't moving fast enough, and staying with us, because I think it's, it's really the start of a very long-term partnership between the Kairos community and PPS.
And I, I wanted to add a comment, too, that I want to echo what Ms. Thorne Ladd said about Ms. Large and her work on this, but also Dani LaDesma for her work with the Policy Committee on really thinking about equity in different ways, and also not just using economics, that we don't want to be punishing our partners who are successful, and to really appreciate, you know, Dani's role as sort of our lead on equity in the district in lots of ways, and, and her walking through the board members of the Policy Committee and really doing some deep work with our partners like Kairos to help us come to this amazing policy that makes moments like this possible. So, thank you to our, our dedicated staff as well.
I am just really thrilled that we're, as we're sitting on stolen land, that we're making a real estate and land-based decision that's somewhat restorative. It's what equity work looks like. It's not comfortable. It is doing something different than the way you did it last time, which I can, I can, I can say and am fully supportive. And in going through the redlined version of the leases, I really appreciated that we removed about 60% of the words that were not useful, and I'm going to encourage all of us at this meeting to, to do the same. If, if we don't have to take up room talking, then we should move the meeting along. Are there any further comments before we vote?
I'm just excited to see what Kairos love in the form of facilities improvements looks like, because we know it could use it.
So, the board will now vote on Resolutions 6355 to 6359. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
Fantastic. You know, we can clap. We turn now to further student public comment before we begin. Do we have additional comment?
We do, yeah.
Okay, so before we begin, I'd like to review the guidelines for public comment. First, the board, of course, thanks you for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments. Your input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board in this moment is to, to listen actively. To that end, I would ask, I'd ask again each of you to tuck your phone away during testimony so we can give our full attention to the people that are in front of us. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues that are raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@ppss.net, publiccomment@ppss.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and our lights aren't working tonight, but you'll hear a beep, a sound after three minutes, and it means it's time for you to conclude your comments at that time. Do we have anyone signed up for student and public comment, or public comment?
We, we do. I'm not sure this is working, I'm sorry. I did want to note that our, the beeper's actually not working either, so you'll hear me say "time" instead. Sorry. We'll start with Xander Levine.
Test. Xander Levine, L-E-V-I-N-E. Good evening, board members. My name is Xander Levine. I'm a rising senior at Lincoln High School. This fall, I hope to attend school-wide assemblies and events with the rest of the student body to build community, reconnect with foster divisions over the past two years, and get hyped about this coming school year. I remember my freshman year, when the whole school was in the gym for the homecoming assembly, for the homecoming assembly. It made me, as a little freshman who didn't know how the next four years would go, excited about, excited about school, and certain that school was more than just a classroom. It, it connected everyone together and brought school spirit to so many. I hope that my brother, who'll be a freshman this year, can have that experience, something that I have talked so positively about. Although it's exciting to hear that we're returning to school five days a week, there has been little to no mention of guidelines surrounding school dances, school assemblies, and other fundamental aspects of high school that create a sense of normalcy. Students have endured enough change. I hope as a district, you allow students to gather in large numbers, even with masks, to let students experience where the most fundamental parts of high school. Please release guidance on how these events will work, and please, let us have a normal school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Rada Joy.
Greetings, PPS Board, Superintendent, Budget Committee Decision Makers. I'm Rada Joy, PPS SLP, former PPS SLP of 12 years, PTA member, mom advocate for mom and parent of Zach and Gabe at Markham Elementary School, who are rising fifth-grade students. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak about classroom sizes and allocated FTE for this upcoming year for Markham and really all PPS schools. Currently, there are only two classrooms assigned to fifth grade at Markham, and according to Principal Smith, projected 34 and 35 students, equalling 69 students. That is not okay. That's a total of 69 students, and this total does not include my son, who has Down Syndrome, who's on an IEP, he's in the intensive skills class, and these four students are assigned to both ISC classrooms and to the regular classrooms, and they need to be counted for the fifth-grade cohorts. They attend specials, PE, art, music, and spend time in the classroom as dictated by their IEP and their free and appropriate public education. So, in the spirit of inclusivity, Zach and the ISC students deserve to be counted in this number, so this number would rise to 73 students. In case you don't already know, Markham is historically an underserved population with 39.62%, and for fairly large ELL population of 16%, we have a large refugee population and BIPOC community. The diverse population of students and learners deserve more staff and teachers to promote and cultivate equity and inclusion at this school. Markham does not quite qualify for Title I status because our overall school population is very high, so the percentage of students in need does not hit the threshold, but these underserved, underserved students need smaller class sizes. And let's not forget, we're in the midst of a pandemic, and students will be returning to school after a year of disrupted learning, and they need more support from teachers to bridge the learning gaps of this past year and a half. With COVID precautionary measures, it's not best practices to have more than 25 students in a classroom, the latest recommendation of three feet distance. I'm having a really hard time envisioning 35, 30 students in a classroom with three feet apart. We expect our numbers to increase as families have been homeschooling and have been home, students will be now returning to the classroom. Our rising fifth graders lack the necessary foundational skills to transition to middle school. It's not acceptable to have such large classroom sizes. So, thank you for please reconsider this budget and FTE staffing for this year, less administration and more staffing in the building.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Teresa, Teresa Botman?
I'm actually sharing my time. I know we're not allowed to be here, right, together?
We're also asking people to come up separately to follow safety protocols. Did you want, did you want to take a minute and a half each?
Yes, please.
Okay, do you mind? I'll time you then.
Good evening, board. My name is Rochelle Chase. I am a founding member of Mom Block and a Kairos PDx parent, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my third grader, Leo, and kids like him. Leo has cerebral palsy and asthma, which makes him high-risk when it comes to COVID. After a long year learning at home, he started back at Kairos yesterday, and I could see the huge smile behind his mask when I picked him up, and I thank you so much for your vote this evening on behalf of Kairos. It's good to be back. It's really good to be back. It's also a moment when case counts, including among children, are rising. From July 31st through August 6th, 216 children with COVID have been hospitalized per day, nearly matching adult admissions in hospitals at January's peak. I know many will say that it's not that many kids, or dismiss those hospitalizations as kids with underlying conditions. I will offer that "not that many" is meaningless when one of them is yours, and that even kids with underlying conditions deserve to be safe at school, especially kids with underlying conditions. I'm asking that you prioritize the wellness of our most vulnerable and act now to ensure the 21-22 school year is a safe one.
Thank you. You had 26 seconds left, by the way. That's what I call brevity. I like that.
My name is Teresa Botman, T-E-R-E-Z-A, last name B-O-T-T-M-A-N, and I'm here tonight as a parent of three PPS students, a PPS teacher, and a member of Portland Caucus of Rank and File Educators, which is a grassroots group of educators advocating for safety and equity in PPS schools. And reading the news and just what Rochelle was mentioning about our numbers rising, hospitals at a breaking point currently, I'm very concerned about a full five-day return to school. And my group, PCOR, we've, along with Mom Block, we joined forces and examined the PPS Swiss cheese model. We combed through national, state, and health expert guidelines and recommendations on schools, and we find that the Swiss cheese mitigation model basically has more holes than cheese, and it's very problematic and very dangerous. It doesn't take into account the latest numbers and cases or the science of the Delta virus, and I'm including the new email we just received, the new protocols, and it doesn't really take into account the lived experience of educators like me and my children. My youngest, younger children go to Kairos, shout out to them, and thank you for renewing their lease. You should turn to them to find out what mitigations they have in place, because they're top-notch. As far as my oldest son, I don't have to imagine his day. It's, I work in a school of 2,000 students. How are we going to do three feet apart in the largest, most populated school? How are we going to do three feet apart in the largest, most populated school? We released the demands, PCOR and Mom Block together released safety demands that we're going to share with you and publicize widely that need to be incorporated in the mitigation in PPS to keep our kids safe.
Thank you, Ms. Botman.
Liz Mick.
I have something for you guys. Do you want to help me with that? Or do you do that? Okay, cool. So I just start? Yeah, okay. So, good evening. My name is Liz Mick. I am a PPS parent to a seven-year-old and a three-year-old. I am also a kindergarten teacher at a Title I school. I am speaking to you as a member of Portland Caucus of Rank and File Educators, or PCOR, in coalition with Mom Block. In this packet I'm sharing with you, we have outlined for you what the PPS COVID safety guidelines, how they fall short, along with our demands to create the safe learning spaces students, staff, and families deserve. With my time today, I will be speaking on pages two and three, focusing on CDL hybrid and cohorting. Current PPS COVID safety guidelines are full of holes, leaving students, staff, families, and community at great risk of contracting and spreading COVID-19, especially as we take on the Delta variant. With some changes to PPS's guidelines for quarantine, testing, distancing, and programming options, we can do much better to keep us all safe. These plans can and must change. Currently, PPS does not offer hybrid or CDL. There is no cohorting for middle school or high school, and it is to the extent possible for elementary school, which also means no cohorting. PPS's only online option, the Online Learning Academy, is already full for grades two through five. PPS does not offer dual-language programming or self-contained special education options in the Online Learning Academy, and students in specialized programs will lose their school placement for transferring online. PPS has no limit on class sizes. Teachers have reported class sizes upwards of 40 students, and class sizes could easily be limited by offering CDL and hybrid options. In reality, there will be no cohorting, and most families who want online learning will have no option within the public school system. Originally, our family was excited to go to school in person again, but the Delta variant has changed the game, and my son and daughter are not eligible to be vaccinated. As a parent, I have attempted to sign my son up for the PPS Online Learning Academy, but again, with the reality of it, he has not been accepted and likely won't be. He's number 14 on the waitlist, and the lottery has already taken place. This Online Learning Academy is not enough, and most parents don't even know that it exists as an option. I also want to make it clear that my son thrived during online learning. He loved the time with family, frequent trips to the park, and the slower pace of life. I reject the notion that a return to in-person is necessary for student mental health. My son, like many other PPS students, did well in CDL, and when he's vaccinated and safe to return, he will. Under PPS current guidelines, my family is scrambling to figure out contingency plans that will keep our family and community safe. For these reasons, we demand safe options for families to choose from, including comprehensive distance learning and a hybrid, which you can all see on the packet that we passed out to you. All right. I have every confidence that we can work together and make a better school system and a better world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabrielle Bovinger-Wild.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Bovinger-Wild. I am a high school teacher at Lincoln High School, but more importantly tonight, I'm a parent of a second grader at MLC, and I've come to talk to you in that capacity. My daughter has asthma, which is pretty manageable except for when she's sick. And even when she gets a common cold, she finds it difficult to breathe. I tried to sign her up for the Online Academy but was told that she would lose her place at MLC if she accepted a position, and that's not something our family is willing to lose right now. So as a result, we're faced with having to send her back before she can be vaccinated. Originally, we were hoping to get her vaccinated before we sent her back. The current mitigation strategies at MLC and PPS are simply not sufficient given the virulence and the transmission rates of the Delta variant. Neither have I had any sort of transparent communication until August about sort of what this will all even look like. Given what we're finding out about Delta, the mitigation strategies are not sufficient. It's impossible to maintain three feet of distance in our classrooms. It's just impossible. I think back to my daughter's kindergarten, second grade, and with numbers of 30 and even 40, we know teachers who now have 40 students slated for their classrooms. It's not possible. Studies suggest that physical distances is absolutely necessary in this case. And we're going from having six feet of distance in the spring when we had the Alpha variant, which was less contagious, to now three feet when possible with the Delta variant that's tearing through schools right now. I watched the work session the other day, and the data I was hearing was all from last year. It was as if Delta data doesn't exist, but it does. I've been reading up on it every day in preparation. And so I just wanted to give you a few of the things that I've been finding. The first is with the Delta variant, it is tearing through schools. It is transmissible. A leading epidemiologist in Sydney who put together the first report on school transmission said she's gone back and is putting up a new report, and she says Delta does not look good in schools. It's tearing through even with masks. At Oak Grove Middle School, 41 students and six staff have fallen ill. At Bright Horizons in Washington, Seattle, they just closed for the second time after 40 students fell ill. The number of Oregon schools that have had over 10 cases are at over 60. The mitigation strategies that we're asking for address the way in which the Delta is affecting kids, which is at least one in 25 children will experience symptoms for more than four months who fall ill. Delta doubles a child's chance of being hospitalized. 46.4% of children hospitalized with Delta do not have pre-existing conditions, and up to one in 50 cases in children involve long COVID. These are numbers I really hope you guys take seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that I'm also setting a three-minute timer, and we seem to be off a little bit.
Okay.
I don't know how that's working.
Would you like me to leave it to your timer?
I don't mind doing the timing. I'm just, I'm doing it on my phone. And I'm waiting until the person gets seated and states their name to push the three-minute start time.
Okay.
That's the process I've been using.
Eric Happel.
It is, I know, right? This chair feels low, but I guess that's what we got to do, right? Yeah, so I've obviously seen you guys online quite a bit. My glasses are a little foggy up here. Eric Happel, H-A-P-P-E-L. I have three daughters in PPS schools. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. First, I want to simply state that I agree with PPS and the board opening the school five full days in-person in fall with all activities. Last week, at the PPS session on health and safety, it was very clear that PPS will open in-person full-time, pointing out how important this is for our students, and that the Multnomah County Health officials recognized that "in-school is safe", pointing out transmissions in school are less than surrounding communities. Also, we saw, as a reminder last year, a very robust study from North Carolina, even before vaccines, showing that in-school transmissions were very low, with zero student-to-staff transmissions and very low, almost zero, student-to-student transmissions. And now here in Oregon, even with our sharp rise in Delta cases, hospitalization for kids have actually come down. I'm looking at OHA data. I'm not sure where the other data has come from. But according to OHA data, in the past five weeks, 16 kids have been hospitalized with COVID. The previous five weeks to that was 22, and the previous five weeks from that was 48. So since COVID hit Oregon, no school-aged child has died, and since the beginning of COVID, there has been only one. So with camps open, kids playing with other kids with and without masks, hospitalizations have actually fallen in Oregon. Schools are safe and have been safe. Under no scenario should we close schools again. I will remind us of a few salient points. First, we know that there's been massive learning loss. The MAP testing showed that last year in math in particular. Second, with data from PPS, we saw that over 25% of students were not attending schools as we expected last year, and that was most hard-hit by our students who were most in need. Third, we know we all have stories of mental health issues for students. This is going to unravel for years. We cannot afford not to send them back. I also want to, I'm here to say that we need to be diligent and careful not to sign agreements with teachers' unions and other groups that will limit in-person time and quality of school for our students next year. In the spring, an agreement signed limited our students by 50% or more of in-school time that was not in line with state guidance. Moreover, Oregon landed number 49 out of 50 for in-school time for students last year. We know teachers and almost every middle school and high school student have had the opportunity to vaccinate. If you are vaccinated, when you consider breakthrough cases versus the number of people vaccinated, 99.99% of those vaccinated will not have a breakthrough case. If you are a kid and vaccinated, your chances are even lower. And as we learned from Multnomah County officials last week, schools can be opened safely. I look forward to seeing my three daughters in PPS next year. Thank you for your time, and please keep us on track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Savage.
Hello. My name is Erin Savage. Thank you. I was a PPS classroom teacher for 17 years. Many times in those years, I put my faith in the district, and many times, I watched the district fall short. Thus, I left teaching altogether two years ago. My wife is a nurse at Portland Providence Hospital and has yet again exhaustedly watched cases surge. We both have two daughters now at Rose City Park, and my advocacy in Portland has turned not of a teacher, but now in the role of a parent. We are nervous about PPS's preparations and the circumstances we now find ourselves in, to say the least. I come to you again with an eager heart to hear that you've got this. You will soon release plans for lunch, and since this is the riskiest time for transmission, I'd like to provide some thoughts. Kids need to be able to eat where significant distancing and ventilation can be provided. Many lunchrooms in schools are also PE rooms, art rooms, dance rooms, so staggered lunches with fewer kids cannot be accommodated. Where there is space to stagger lunches to smaller cohorts, staffing issues could be considered with wondering who will monitor these lunches. If EAs are pulled from the classroom to do so, as often happens, it means less classroom support that is so needed right now. There is also the question of cleaning eating spaces between these cohorts. Are we staffed to do that? Most lunches see 400 kids eating with one custodian present. Furthermore, these rooms are huge, and are they ventilated properly? Many lunchrooms are interior to the building, like at Da Vinci, no outside air possible, or in basements like in Vernon. If classrooms are used, again, how will this be staffed, as teachers themselves need lunches? Many classrooms do not have windows still that open to outside air, and we have to factor in that wildfire smoke might not even allow us to open windows this year. Again, who will wipe down each desk and deal with all the increased trash and food waste in each classroom, if this is the option? Many teachers still have rooms that are not swept every day with trash emptied daily still. I had mice poop cover kid desks every single day in my classroom without even kid lunch crumbs to factor in, which leads us to outside is clearly the best option for safely eating. I'd like to share my opinion that the district should have been using COVID relief money this entire time to build permanent covered structures at all sites that do not currently have these. We cannot expect our kids to be vaccinated until January, so we need a plan for a variety of spacing to pull this off as soon as possible. Since this has not occurred, I'd like to see semi-permanent tents erected immediately at any site that doesn't have a covered outdoor space currently. I desperately want our kids to go back to school, but it needs to be done safely. As aside, I would also use this magical COVID money to buy down class sizes for this critical year and am appalled at the preliminary class sizes that teachers are anticipating. Please proactively do what you can to prevent worst-case scenarios, and please show me this time you've got this.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. You just answered my question. Again, thank you for your comments. Feel free to connect with our board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you'd like to follow up with, with the board or the board office. Student Representative Weinberg, do you have a report?
It'll be pretty short tonight. As with most of the public comments, the first part of my report is just as cases are rising, particularly for our unvaccinated younger children, I just want to stress the importance of making sure you continue to wear masks, continue to social distance, and as we go back into school, continue to wear your mask, social distance, and really encourage people to get the vaccine as well. If cases continue to rise, some questions arose with the DSC. If we even have a plan for hybrid or CDL, what that will look like if we continue to see cases skyrocketing. And also, I am heartened to hear that we will hear a plan for lunch because that was definitely a large question among my peers and also with the DSC as well. And earlier today, just questions around how we do large activities at schools, like assemblies, performances, that I know all students really look forward to during the school year. The second thing I wanted to comment on was the Saturday's Benson groundbreaking. I had the opportunity to be there along with multiple directors, and I just wanted to say how amazing it was to see that wonderful school, sorry, Benson Polytechnic High School. I'm going to correct myself. Benson Polytechnic High School. How excited I am to see that in three years, we'll have a brand-new school there. And lastly, just a small update on my mental health focus for this year. I've been planning with Yan Sechow and Jeffrey Weiser, who support the DSC, and we're planning action steps to move forward with that, and I look forward to share more in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Representative, Student Representative Weinberg. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report at this time?
Thank you. Yes, Chair. I'm going to warn you, we're having an electrical issue over here, so we might lose the superintendent's report midstream. And I think we're going to pull up the front monitor here. But good evening, directors. Buenas tardes to community members and staff that are joining us here in person and to everyone live-streaming from home this evening. I have a brief report for directors this evening. I really want to preserve the time for staff who's going to be providing a detailed and comprehensive back-to-school update later on in the agenda this evening. As you know, last week, we focused on our public health advisory team. So we look forward to sharing with the community how the district's going to keep everyone informed and our evolving plans for responding to all of the ongoing questions. You heard some this evening related to back-to-school. Hopefully, our community saw the message earlier today, which is, I think, is a strong start. I do want to mention that some of the important work that is happening across the district right now, which I think photographs of these children illustrate, is we are in fact up and running. We said months ago that we were committed to returning to five-day, full-day, in-person instruction this fall, and there has continued to be relentless preparation and work to ensure we welcome students back on September 1st. So just as we are every August, staff is in full swing right now with all of the traditional activities that go into opening schools each fall, with the added challenge of continuing to simultaneously address COVID-related issues. But before students come back, the adults first return into place to prepare for the new school year. As such, as we prepare, as we approach September, more and more of staff and leadership are returning to in-person work. Entering the month of August means we've commenced numerous professional learning and leadership activities. This is sort of our brief time to really come together. This past week, our cabinet-level leaders, which we refer to as the superintendent's leadership team, met for all-day meetings last week, and then on Friday, central office leaders spent a day together at Idaby Wells Barnett High School. Thank you to directors who were able to join us and stop by to say hello on Friday. Thank you, Chair, to pass for your words. The themes of our gatherings have been to discuss how can we establish the supportive conditions to positively welcome back after a long absence away from campuses and each other, our educators, staff, students, and families. This past Monday, we also welcomed all of our newest school leaders to PPS. We are also happy to see all of our school secretaries again, who perform a critical role in each of our school communities. We like to provide these two employee groups with a head start before everyone shows up for our biggest meeting of the year, starting tomorrow morning, the one that signals really the start of a new school year, our annual leader the start of a new school year, our annual Leadership Institute. I'm thankful to, for all the collaboration and to the administrators who played a large role in planning this year's institute, which will take place Wednesday through Friday at Grant High School. We hope to see directors dropping by when you can say hello and hope you will join us for the superintendent's traditional back-to-school speech and lunch on Friday. And next week, we begin welcoming back central office staff, so there will be an increased in-person presence of staff here at the BESC and at all of our various administrative buildings. As much as things have been different the last 18 months, we're committed to returning to whatever normalcy is possible right now in service to our students and educators. And coming together in person safely, always utilizing our layered health and safety approach and following guidance from public health experts, is an important step as we get closer to September 1st. Speaking of new leaders, just in time for the new school year, we are very excited to welcome another talented cabinet member to Portland Public Schools, someone who will be playing a critically important role in us fulfilling our educational mission. Dr. Cheryl Proctor, an educational leader with a track record of creating opportunity and disrupting barriers to joyful learning for students, is our new chief academic officer. Dr. Proctor succeeds Dr. Luis Valentino, who was appointed superintendent of the Coachella Valley Unified School District in Southern California recently. Building on the important foundational work led by Dr. Valentino, Dr. Proctor will now grab the baton in leading the Office of Teaching and Learning, which includes under its umbrella the College and Career Readiness Team, Humanities, STEAM, Early Learning, and Athletics, with a focus on building our organizational capacity through instructional guidance, professional development, and educational materials, you heard about some of them earlier, to fulfill our refreshed mission to provide every PPS student, say it with me, a rigorous, high-quality academic learning experience that is inclusive and joyful. So let me tell you a little bit about Dr. Proctor. See, we're going to keep quizzing each other. Cheryl comes to PPS from the school district of Philadelphia, the 18th-largest school system in the country, where she served as assistant superintendent. She first joined the Philadelphia Central Office in 2016 as executive director in the Office of their School Improvement, providing leadership and guidance to school leaders in the planning and implementation of programs geared to increase student achievement, especially for Philadelphia's predominantly Black student population. Before her time in Philadelphia, Dr. Proctor enjoyed a successful, lengthy, 17-year career with Broward County Public Schools in Florida, where she served in school leadership roles for more than 10 years. We are elated to have Cheryl joining Team PPS, and as is tradition here, we have Dr. Proctor here in person to share a few words with the board this evening. Would you mind, Dr. Proctor, sharing a few words of introduction?
And, Dr. Proctor, we're being a little nicer to you. We've had folks come and speak to us on their very first day with us, but I think you've been here like a week already?
Uh, maybe about three or four years.
Okay.
Well, good evening, board members. Thank you so much, Superintendent Guerrero, for the wonderful introduction. I am so pleased to be here with PPS and to continue some awesome work that you all have started here. I come with just my heart full with the 22 years of work that I've done on behalf of children. And what Guadalupe didn't mention is, I started off as a preschool special education teacher. I taught elementary autistic students. And I get excited just talking about it, coming full circle here. And I've also led high schools as a high school teacher, high school administrator, elementary school principal. So when I come to this work in academics, I come to this work fully understanding that our students need that high-quality, rigorous, inclusive, equitable education that will allow them to fully discover themselves, their full potential, and then walk fully in it. And as the adults that lead and support our children, it's very important for us to ensure that we are equipped, that we plan effectively academic programming, build an instructional framework, ensure that we're aligning the instruction to the standard, which brings about equity, because there is a line of equity when we really align things with deep rigor. I'm also a parent of a student with special needs, and she has contributed the most to my growth and leadership as an educator. If you have children you know, your children will test you, they will stretch you, they will allow you to have new ways of thinking and about your approach to children. And I take everything that she has taught me into this work that I do as well. So I am just so grateful for this opportunity, very pleased to be here with you all, and I just look forward to a phenomenal time with PPS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team, Dr. Proctor.
So glad.
So glad you're here.
And then lastly, I'll leave you with this image taken just this past Saturday morning, where many of us participated in and attended the Benson Polytechnic High School groundbreaking ceremony. This fall, remember, Benson students, like other high school communities before them, will temporarily commence classes at the Marshall Campus, and then in three years, return to an incredible new facility. So as I shared in my remarks on Saturday, despite all of the challenges we're facing as a school system at this moment and as a community, work continues to advance our audacious goals in PPS. We are grateful to the voters of Portland for their support in making possible an ambitious agenda to modernize Portland schools, among other identified goals, so that every student has the opportunity to attend a safe, healthy, modern, state-of-the-art school campus, the kind of learning environments that will inspire and support their learning experience. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I see that the next thing has to do with board and committee, board committee and conference reports, and I'm sorry to announce, I do not have an announcement ready, and so I'm going to ad lib this. It'll be ready for our next meeting. The assignment itself has a little bit more work to do, and that's on me. So that's forthcoming. I've emailed board members a couple of times. It's not quite fully fleshed out yet, so I apologize. We're going to move now next to the Portland Federation of School Professionals and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon, ratification of the Collective Bargaining Agreement 2021 to 2023. Superintendent, would you introduce this next item?
It would be my pleasure, Chair DePass. Tonight, we are pleased to have before directors for your consideration approval of the agreement between PPS and the Portland Federation of School Professionals. Here's the new acronym, Directors, otherwise known as PFSP. I would like to invite up PFSP President, new president, Michelle Batten, up to say a few words.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Michelle Batten, and I'm here as the new president of PFSP. Some of you may already know me from my 11 years as field rep for the union and my many years as a district employee. Seated behind me is John McDuffie, our new field rep who has taken on my previous duties. John was most recently our halftime member services rep and a library assistant at Ottley Green Middle School. We're here tonight to celebrate your ratification of our 2021 to 2023 PFSP-PPS Collective Bargaining Agreement. We are pleased with the contract. Our own membership ratified the new contract with a 97% approval rating. I've been involved in PFSP contract bargaining since 2003 and want to share with you that this was the most respectful bargaining session I've ever encountered. Both sides came to the table with issues important to them, and even when labor and management couldn't agree on an article or a concept, we each listened sincerely to the other's position. I'm proud of the work we accomplished, and I look forward to your ratification vote this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Batten. It's great to meet you in your new role. Congratulations, by the way.
It's nice to know that our friends at PFSP have clearly a succession plan. Next, I'd like to introduce up our Chief of Human Resources Officer, Sharon Reese, and someone else who played a really important role, Genevieve Ruff.
Come on up, come on.
Our interim Director of Labor Relations, and they're going to share some of the highlights from this tentative agreement.
Okay, is this on? It's not on.
Keep talking, oh. Good evening, directors. I'm the Chief HR Officer, Sharon Reese, and PPS parent since 2010. PFSP is an extremely important union for us. PFSP represents almost 1,400 of our staff. Not only are our most diverse staff in terms of race and ethnicity, but also diversity in type of role, from admin assistants to physical and occupational therapists, campus security agents, paraeducators, community agents, to name a few. I have to read my notes, because I can never remember all of them. The care and support and working conditions of these important and valued employees is fundamental to our ability to serve children. And the best care and support come for these, or when our district and our labor partners work together to find the common ground, where district interests and staff interests in the context of collective bargaining agreements reach outcomes that benefit staff and students. So we're very pleased to have Michelle Batten and John McDuffie here representing their membership this evening. And I also want to add my congratulations to Michelle, who succeeds the long and dedicated leadership of the recently retired Belinda Reagan, and Michelle has taken over the president role as the first person of color to lead the PFSP team. And we look forward to continuing to build on our relationship between the district and PFSP. Sitting next to me is the Genevieve Ro- Ruff. I did it again. Genevieve Rowe, I'm going to blow the mask, our Director of Employee and Labor Relations. I've got a block about her last name. We've talked about it many a time. So Genevieve Rowe was bargaining chair for PPS during the successor bargain, and she succeeds the employee and labor, she, wow, leads the employee and labor relations team. She's going to talk about the contract tonight and answer your questions regarding it. I'm going to stop talking.
Good evening. I mean, I just want to reiterate what Michelle said, which was, it was an extremely respectful bargain together. We completed it in, I think, eight sessions or so, so fairly rapidly, and before the contract expired, which is always exciting. And we're really proud of what we got, what we came out of it with. Like Sharon said, there are about 1,400 PFSP employees that support the district, and they're one of our most valued groups. And so we're glad that Michelle and John could be here and look forward to, you know, another two years of a great contract with them.
Thank you very much. So it's Rowe as in?
It is.
Okay. It's always good to know. Thank you. So do I have a motion and a second? Do we have any comments, first of all?
So moved.
I'm asking for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6360, Portland Federation of School Professionals and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon, ratification of the Collective Bargaining Agreement 2021 to 2023.
So moved.
Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Is there any board discussion?
So I just want to be clear, it was Director Constan moved and Director Brim Edward seconded that motion. Just wanted to make sure Ms. Bradshaw got that.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience as I learn my role here. Did you note that?
I just want to thank our staff for the incredible work on this, and again, thank PFSP for hearing all the different roles you fill. And there are many, somebody, we were at the principals event the other day talking about teachers, what was it, teachers are the soul, principals are the heart, and I think you all are, it's not the cog, but like, without you, it would just all fall apart. So maybe you're the lifeblood of the schools. So thank you so much for your work and for continuing to serve our students so well.
As someone whose last name means peace, I really appreciate that I'm hearing from you, Ms. Batten, that it was one of the most, you say you have years of experience, but one of the most pleasant bargaining sessions. It's really heartening.
And picking up on that, Chair DePass, what's most gratifying for me in hearing about the tenor of the negotiations is that PFSP and, you know, leadership and employees feel the respect that we have for all of you and what you contribute in every single one of our schools, because historically, that hasn't always been the case. And that, that's heartbreaking, because we do rely on you and honor you so much. So to hear that we have reached that place, and, you know, you reach a good bargain and you do it in an amicable and respectful style, and then next time you come back to the table, there's new issues, but you've built a real, hopefully, we've built an enduring sense of trust and can deal with any tough new issues that arise next time around, but that's really gratifying for me. So thank you really deeply for all you do and the spirit in which your organization and our organization came together.
So I just want to add, just build on what everybody else said, because having been a parent of three, nothing happens in a school without your members. We know how things work. So thank you for all your member services. I did want to also acknowledge, what I like about it is, not only was it a professional and amiable negotiation, but I also think we did some good things. We have some competitive compensation and also some things that we advanced relating to our racial equity goals. And at the risk of getting them not quite stating them correctly, I'm wondering if you can just, one of you could lay out some of the things that we accomplished together or agreed upon that I think also align nicely with our racial equity goals that we have.
Yeah, sure. So some of these are very nuanced and will only make sense if you're living and breathing in this contract, but it will be, the outcome is what's going to be best for students and what's in schools. And so we wanted stability most of all, because we're going into such an interesting year and coming out of such an interesting year. So we have stable head start staffing, which is really important as new kids come into school that need support. And so there's this no bumping process, there's a process where staff are not bumped in and out of those schools, so that we can stabilize head start schools, stability to CSI school staffing, so no bumping employees in and out of those schools that are classified as CSI schools. And then, like Director Brim Edward said, compensation, we did a lot of work on the compensation, so that we have competitive wages and that we can retain these important staff.
Great, thank you. I think the other thing worth noting is, I'm not sure how this hadn't happened before, but for eligible staff, Martin Luther King Junior Day is now going to be a paid holiday, and also Juneteenth, which is great. Separately from this contract negotiation, are we going to add that to our annual calendar as, now that it's a federal holiday? Seems like we should amend our calendar to do that.
We made that mental note when it was passed and realized it's still on the to-do list, but probably something we should anticipate. We'll probably need to bring it back to the board.
I'm really proud that this contract, so soon after the federal recognition, incorporated that in, and hope that we do that for all our other, those employees that are still working on June 19th. So thank you to everybody. I think we have a lot to be proud of together and really appreciate all the members' work and the staff work.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? On Resolution 6360, Portland Federation of School Professionals with School District 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Did we already do this? We did, but we went back. So we're talking about the ratification of the Collective Bargaining Agreement 2021 to 2023. All in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6360 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially. unofficially voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item, congratulations. Nice work, everyone. Thank you. Our next item, I'll have Director Brim Edwards, would you like to introduce this next item? It's an update on the health and safety audit.
Thank you, Chair de Pass. So last year, in the board-approved audit plan, we had an audit item, which was the health and safety checks. And when it became clear that students were going to go back to limited in-person, well, limited in-person and then back to hybrid, our auditors moved into doing their work and conducting the audit. And I just want to say at the onset, that this is really marked between collaboration between the Office of the Independent Performance Auditor and district staff, and I think it's going to dovetail nicely with our conversation later tonight about health and safety, because the auditors have been in a lot of our buildings, checking on the building safety plans. So with that, I want to introduce our Senior Internal Performance Auditor, Janice Hansen.
Good evening, Ms. Hansen. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Thanks. So, my name is Janice Hansen. For a couple of you board members who I haven't met, I'm the Senior Internal Performance Auditor, and together with Mary Catherine Moore, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight, we make up the Office of Internal Performance Audit. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the results of the Health and Safety Checks Audit. I am going to run through a few slides as quickly as possible to save room at the end to answer any questions that you guys might have. First. As Director Brim Edwards noted, the Health and Safety Checks Audit was included in the audit plan for the 2021 school year, and it was approved by the Board of Education back in October of 2020. The audit objective, the objective of the audit was to determine whether school buildings where students were participating in in-person instruction during the 2020-21 school year were compliant with their building safety plans, and those building safety plans were called the School Site Reopening Plan. And note, please note that the audit did not determine the adequacy of the plan, it just determined compliance with the plan. The scope of the audit included school buildings where students were participating in in-person instruction during the 2021 school year, which, you know, we had Lippi that started kind of late in the year, but then transitioned to hybrid in March and April. So communication was really important for this audit. We visited a very large number of schools. So upfront, we worked with a central administration team to kind of develop a communication protocol. What we did is we would send out on Wednesdays typically an email to building administrators who had been selected for building audit tours the following week. So we emailed them, we said, hey, you're on the list, we'll be there next week, but we did not tell them the exact date and time at which the audit tour was going to take place. Following the audit tours, we provided the building administrators with a verbal debriefing. We were able to go over any items that may have been identified during the tool, tour. This provided the building administrators with timely feedback and the opportunity to, you know, immediately address any items that were identified. We followed up with written results of the audit tours that were emailed to the building administrators, and we did that really timely, typically within a couple of business days. We also participated in a weekly status update meeting with Central Office Administration Team to discuss and address any concerns we identified during the tours and also answer any questions that, you know, kind of came up during the time period. So, next. So, how did we do this work? It's really complicated, so bear with me here. So, we created a checklist to utilize when we were going out touring, and I will give you an example and walk you through that a little bit later. But the, and we used the individual schools reopening plan and the PPS COVID-19 Health and Safety SOPs to create that checklist. So to ensure the school site reopening plans included the necessary required health and safety precautions, PPS central administration staff created the SOPs to guide building administrators in creating their reopening plan. The SOPs would describe how to perform activities within the required health and safety parameters outlined, and so that led to the creation of their site reopening plan. So we toured 41 of our schools. We were very busy. Sometimes we visited two a day. So we were able to prioritize school buildings that were identified as Title I, TSI, or CSI. And, okay. A couple of notes before I go into the example. The photos were taken by OIPA staff while we were out doing tours. The example included in this presentation had abbreviated content, so just keep that in mind as we talk through them. The complete Health and Safety Checks Audit, the checklist is included in your Health and Safety Checks Audit Report, which I printed for all of you guys, and I flagged on your report where that complete Health and Safety Check list is. Following the meeting, the audit report will be posted on PPS's Audit Reports page. I listed a link there, and I put in parentheses the path from the homepage in case you're looking for it. So, the first example, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the building entry. This is a very complicated process. Each individual school had their own plan. So here, as an example, from the SOP related to entry, there is some guidance that was provided, again abbreviated, not the full SOP content here. So each school needed to identify points of entry to the building to minimize logistical challenges and promote social distancing. So what did that actually look like? So, in the school site reopening plan, if you pull open the audit report to where I tabbed it, I highlighted a section to draw to your attention. So in that section, it is the site re-entering, or building entry section. And you'll see there in the middle column, I highlighted the sentence that says, add the details related to your specific building. So in their plan, this is what you would see. So it would say something along the lines of, students will enter the building through their designated door at one of five entrances. But every school had a variety of different entrance plans. So kindergarten students would go through this entrance, in this example, grades two and four would go through another entrance, grades five, first and fifth would, and so forth. Hand sanitizer was required at all of each entrance, and staff would be there to visually screen students for symptoms and monitor social distancing. So, with that being their plan, what did we do? We did, we would confirm that the entry procedures followed the processes that were identified in the plan. We went to the entrances. So sometimes if it was just one auditor there, we would go from one entrance, stand there a few minutes, chat with the screening staff, and go to another entrance and try to make it to all of them. We didn't always make it to all of them, but we tried our best. Sometimes there was two of us, and sometimes there was just one. We checked to make sure that each entry, the staff were briefly observing the students for symptoms and asking screening questions if necessary. We confirmed that hand sanitizer was available at each entry point and masks were available at each entry point. And then we also checked with the custodian for their supply. So we wanted to make sure that the school had enough masks and hand sanitizer to meet their immediate needs, depending on how often they were getting resupplied. So I have a couple of pictures here. So the center picture is really, you're not going to be able to see it in this, but, you know, this was one of the plans that I saw that was very elaborate. And what you had there listed is the teacher's name, and then in the center, it was the row number in which the students needed to line up at. So out in their playground area, there were lines with numbers based off what teacher, they knew what line to go to. And then, based off of what color it was highlighted in, they would then enter the building based off the color. So all the green would enter in one entrance, and all the blues would go to another entrance. So there on your right is a kind of a sample of what a health screening area might look like at a building. You can see that there are masks available and also hand sanitizer. So a couple of additional pictures, some symptom space, so each school is required to have a symptom space. And what you can see on the, on my right-hand side, is a table, but you can't see the plexiglass, but there was plexiglass there. So if a student had symptoms, they could sit behind the plexiglass and have a conversation with the SHA or the school nurse doing their screening. I also took a picture of this bathroom, because I thought it was really genius. So what I saw in some of the plans were, you know, the plans would say, these were the bathrooms for these grades, and no more than three students would be in the bathroom at any given time. So at some buildings, we saw a system where they would say, you know, is anybody in here? They would stand at the door and say, and then if somebody replied, they would know if somebody was in there. But this school, along with some of, subsequently, I did see this quite a few places, but they had these slots, so each student would take their card with them, put it in, so you could walk up to the bathroom and know whether or not there was two or three students. But this is just an example of all the cool things that the school's buildings came up with to make this stuff work. I also wanted to show you a picture. You know, some places had these checklists, they put it on the door, which I thought was great, others didn't, was no requirement to have them, but here was one that I thought was really awesome, was a teacher checklist. I also included a picture of a max capacity sign that was not completed. So this was something that we identified that was missing. So each room was required to have the max capacity for the room listed. So in this example, it was missing. So we notified the building administrator, and pretty much as soon as we left, they were there filling it in. And we requested a photo of the filled-in max capacity sign emailed to us, and then we would say that that item was resolved. So, and audit conclusion, so based off the results of the audit, overall, we found that the buildings where students were participating in in-person instruction, they were compliant with their site reopening plan. And further, as public health guidelines continue to be updated, it appears the district has created a process through its internal health and safety team to update applicable SOPs and efficiently and effectively disseminate that guidance to impacted stakeholders throughout the district. So, one additional note on the conclusion, you know, overall, they were really compliant with everything, but in addition to that, we didn't even find any noncompliance with the plan that would be considered significant. So they really did a great job. Once they established their plan, they implemented it and stuck to it, and when we showed up unannounced, you know, they did have some notice, but they were following it really consistently. So this is a really great, clean audit. In the, oops, sorry, in the audit report, I did include some examples of what non-significant items were identified during the tours. So if you're interested, those are on Page Six. So there's a couple of examples of some noncompliance that was not significant that was identified, like for example, the max capacity sign. All right. So the PPS policy related to internal performance auditing requires that we submit the draft report to the district administration for response. We did so. In this case, there were no findings or recommendations. As a result, no responses included in the audit report. If there were, that response would be included in the report. We want to extend our appreciation to the building administrators, the staff, the custodians who welcomed us on our tour as auditors. We're not always welcomed everywhere, but it was really nice. The building administrators were so excited to see us, to show us the work that they had done. So we really appreciate them, and we got to meet so many people across the district who are all so nice to us. Also wanted to specifically say thank you to Juniper. She is a project manager in the Office of Student Support, and she took on the role of being our audit liaison, which was in addition to all of the other work that she had on her plate, and she was so responsive and helped us and provided us documentation that we needed and kept us up to date on changes to SOPs. So it was really awesome. And she was able to collaborate with us and give us feedback that provided value throughout the audit. So, in conclusion, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the PPS employees who worked countless hours to implement all the health and safety processes and protocols necessary to open the schools for hybrid in-person instruction. Having an audit report with no findings and no recommendations is not common, and so it is really a reflection of their hard work and dedication.
Thank you. I think that we all want non-exciting audits, and it's wonderful that you are welcomed. I'm sure that's not normal, that's not the usual case. You don't want to see the auditor coming necessarily.
Not usually.
But that's fantastic, fantastic to hear that there were absolutely no findings. My only question was, and you might have said this earlier, and I was distracted, was that occupancy, was that considered a non-significant finding?
Yes.
Like, you just send me an email of the number and you're good?
Oh, no. Not quite that easy. So the Facilities Department created spreadsheets of the occupancy for each of the rooms within the building. So when the occupancy wasn't listed, we needed to get the spreadsheet to see what the occupancy should be. We also confirmed, we went and counted the number of students who were in there, so when we got back and looked at the spreadsheet, we could confirm it was not over the max capacity. We counted a lot of students in a lot of rooms, but to confirm it, they were within the occupancy listed, and when they weren't listed, we took the extra step of getting the spreadsheet to make sure that when they did fill it in and send us a picture that it was filled in, that it agreed to what that capacity was on the spreadsheet. So yes, that was a non-significant item, because they were within the capacity. So if the capacity had not been listed, and we counted the students, and it was above the capacity, then that would have been a significant item, which we would have been able to address immediately, given the communication protocols that we had in place.
Great. And that was, I appreciate that additional nuance. Thanks. Are there any other questions?
I just have a question around the max occupancy. What was the metric used to gauge how many students can be in each room for each school?
Thank you so much for that question. What I will say is the scope of our Thank you so much for that question. What I will say is the scope of our audit was very limited because we are not public health experts as the auditors. So we really relied on the district to establish based off of the, thank you so much, Dan's going to help me out here.
Dan's the rescue.
What I was able to confirm is that they were within the max capacity that was established. And Dan can tell you how they established the expected max capacity.
Thank you. Good evening, directors. Dan Young, Chief Operating Officer. So what we did for, when we had Lippi and then we had hybrid, we were able, we have got good data on all of our classrooms and our classroom sizes. So we knew what the requirements were for, the spatial requirements. We had so many square feet per student. We knew we had to keep six-foot distancing, and we also had the layouts of those rooms. So we took those variables and we put it into a formula, it was a spatial formula, where we created these 36-square-foot, what were they? I think hexagons is what they were. And we placed them into every single classroom. And then we would count those. The system would do it. We have over 3,000 classrooms. We can do it by hand. And then it would say, we could fit so many hexagons in that classroom. And if that number was 21, that's the number that would go on the door, and that's the number of seats that were put into the classroom.
So is that number, so essentially, you're taking the square footage of the room, you're taking that number, this is the total square footage of this room, and you're saying, based on that number with three feet of distance apart, and it hits every, you know, it's going to hit every angle, so to make sure that we can have three feet from every angle, that this is the total number of people that are going to be able to be in this room?
Yeah, good question. At the time, it was, there was different spatial requirements when we did for the hybrid. It was six feet.
So it should have been even less.
There was also, yes, correct. There was also 35 square feet per student was requirement. And then we also put a factor in for egress, what needs to be able to exit the room.
Is that also part of the report so that we can see the metric that was used?
We've got a really wonderful graphic that explains it. I'm happy to send that.
I even love spreadsheets. And so if you've got a formula.
We've got those too.
I love to look at formulas. So if you can share a formula, then that's even better because then we can alter it and say, based on this, if the number goes up, if the number goes down, this is how many people should be able to be in it. And we can also self-check. So I like those pieces. So if you could share that, whatever's available.
Absolutely.
I'll take it. Thank you.
Happy to.
I have a question, Dan. This may be for you, so you might want to stay there. Or it might be for you, Dr. Byrd. But so this is all created for Lippi and hybrid. So are we planning to keep some of the elements of this checklist and have some system in place to check fidelity to them as we move into full in-person reopening?
So we do not, so the Office of Internal Performance Audit is not currently planning on performing any additional tours in the fall. I am working on producing a draft audit plan for the board to consider. And so if that is something you would like for us to consider for fall or continue to the following year, it is something we can talk about.
Actually, aside from the audit function, I'm just wondering from, you know, we've created, the audit team invested in creating this artifact that is a checklist that has many items that would still be relevant even though our conditions are changed. And I'm just wondering if we have discussed whether we're keeping some of that and training our building leaders to, you know, refer back to it.
We're definitely keeping a lot of the protocols. We're actually going to be going over here pretty soon, some of what those health and safety protocols. But I think it might be a good idea of keeping some of those checklist items as a quick reference for our staff. We haven't talked about that specifically, but it might be a good tool to be able to provide them.
So just also as a sign out for consideration, the checklist was based off of the standard operating procedures that were in place during the time in which we were doing the tours, which did change over time. So if it were to be something that would want to be considered long-term, it would need to be updated to be reflective of the more current SOPs.
We have a few more people that have questions. It looks like you have a question, Director Scott and Director Brum Edwards, and then Director Lowry. And then we're going to take a short break. And we're also, just to remind everybody, a few minutes past our.
I just actually have a brief comment that doesn't actually have to, it does have to do with health and safety. And it's just a reminder for folks that as we are meeting here, that mask-wearing is part of what we're asking for everyone to do. And it's really important that masks go over nose and mouth and be snug. I know it's hot. I know glasses fog up, but that's part of sort of our compact of being here is to keep one another safe. So just ask people to please remember to keep your masks on while we're gathered in this space.
Thank you, Chair Lowry.
Director Lowry.
I just wanted to say, Janice, thank you for the audit and the diligent work on this. And thank you to staff and our building administrators, our facility staff for implementing all of the procedures and implementing so effectively that even with a rigorous analysis, you really had no significant findings. And I hope that gives confidence. It certainly gives confidence to me as a parent of two PPS students. I hope it gives confidence to the entire PPS community that as we prepare to reopen in the fall full-time, that we will be able to follow the safety protocols that are in place and keep our students and our staff safe. So it was a very timely audit. I appreciate your work on it and appreciate the findings.
Thank you.
Director Brum Edwards, would you like to share a brief comment?
Yes, and I'm just going to build on Director Scott's comment because the thing I want to emphasize out of all this is on the audit conclusion page, because part of the conversation was also to give our school community confidence in what's happening. But the thing that I think we should also remember is the statement here that says, "As public health guidelines continue to be updated, it appears the school district has created a process through its internal health and safety team to update applicable standard operating procedures and efficiently and effectively disseminate updated guidance." So basically sharing that the district staff is evolving as, you know, we're finding every day, things are changing. And so the assessment from the auditors, that the district staff is not stuck in a static mode, but really has a dynamic process by which to continue to update and evolve, to me gives me a lot of confidence. So both thank you to the staff and to the auditors.
Did you have a comment, Student Representative Weinberg?
Yeah, it'll be really quick. Also during this process, just wanted to mention that Janice also consulted with the DSC almost weekly, maybe even a little more often with emails and stuff. It was really great to kind of incorporate that student voice aspect into the audit as well. So thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. With that, we'll just break for a brief five-minute stretch break or roller skating break.
Got that big parking lot out here.
What you mean, Herman, we're going roller skating next.
Not at all.
Okay, can we get started here? We're going to get started again. That was, that was a wonderful break. That was a wonderful break. If you can hear me clap once. Should we do that again? We're going to have an update on fall reopening. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce this next item?
I would love to. And if you don't mind me taking an unagendized compliment here for our multimedia services staff, always behind the curtain, Terry Proctor and Brian Robertson, I know you're back there. They are running dual live streams. In addition to tonight's regular and special meeting, they also are doing all the preparations for our Leadership Institute bright and early in the morning. So I know they're hustling. So thank you, Terry and Brian, back there. So yes, we're excited to provide a detailed fall reopening update. And as you can see, we have staff here before you, led off by our Chief of Staff Jonathan Garcia, Dan Young, our Chief Operating Officer, and Dr. Sean Byrd, our Deputy Superintendent for Instruction in Schools. So take it away.
Awesome. Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. So good evening, directors and Student Representative Weinberg. Tonight, my colleagues and I will be providing you with more details on how we at PPS are continuing to prioritize a healthy in-person learning experience for every PPS student and educator. You will hear from Chief Operating Officer Dan Young and Deputy Superintendent for Instruction in School Communities, Dr. Sean Byrd, give you an overview of the layered measures we plan to implement this school year. In addition, we value the need by you, our families and community to get detailed information about each of our layered mitigation strategies. That is why today, we launched our back-to-school website dedicated to sharing with our community further details, including our standard operating procedures and answers to common questions. Directors, we hope to go over this presentation first, and welcome questions or comments at the end. We are excited to return to in-person, full-time learning for PPS students this school year. Director Brum Edwards, I want to thank you for the earlier audit presentation on our fidelity to implement health and safety measures in accordance to public health guidance. Our school leaders, educators, and hard-working staff have had more than 18 months of practice, if you will, on how to mitigate COVID-19 and creating a welcoming and inclusive learning environment for every student. Working together, we know that there is a path for a full return to full, a return to full-time in-person learning starting September 1st. I want to again commend the Superintendent, the Board of Education, and the Oregon Department of Education for sharing in this commitment to prioritizing a safe return to joyful learning in our classrooms, auditoriums, and playgrounds. As Monoma County Public Health Director Jessica Guernsey shared with directors last Wednesday, one of their top public health priorities is to get back kids back and keep back in school and keeping kids in school this school And as we share in this commitment of returning to in-person learning, we're also seeing a local surge as a result of the Delta variant. As you can see by the chart on the left, we are averaging 119 new confirmed cases per day, or 14.7 cases for every 100,000 residents across Monoma County. This is happening while we'll see a steady increase in people getting vaccinated, with 66% of people who are eligible getting vaccinated, being fully vaccinated, and over 70% with at least one goes. Tonight, you will hear from our team an overview of the layered health and safety measures that we are implementing across our schools to help maximize a full in-person learning experience this school year. We believe, informed by public health experts, that established- We believe informed by public health experts that establishing these strong layered health and safety measures against COVID-19, we can maximize a full uninterrupted in-person learning experience all school year. Last week, Dr. Goodwin of Children's National Hospital made reference to the Swiss cheese model of pandemic defense. Here at PPS, we recognize that there are no single intervention is perfect at preventing the spread of coronavirus. Consistent with our practice of following public health guidance throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and in consultation with our public health experts, we've identified at least nine effective health and safety measures to keep students and staff healthy and safe as possible against COVID-19. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sean Byrd, Deputy Superintendent, to walk us through a few of these interventions, who will also share the mic with Dan Young, our Chief Operating Officer.
All right, thank you Jonathan, good evening Directors. As we all know vaccinations against COVID-19 are the most effective way to end this pandemic. Right now across our communities, we're seeing an uptick in COVID-19 cases among the unvaccinated, which as we know includes children under twelve years old. And while PPS is not a public health agency, we've been doing our part this summer by hosting free COVID-19 vaccine clinics across our school district, and in partnership with our culturally-specific partners, the Portland Fire Bureau, and health providers in the region. As we anticipate the approval of a vaccine for children under twelve, our teams are preparing our schools to become central hubs for students to receive the vaccine. Additionally, middle and high school principals are coming back from their much-needed summer break, eager to work with health providers to create opportunities for students to get access to the vaccine on campus this school year. We of course will keep our community updated via our social media, website, and other channels of communication, and to learn more you can visit us at pps.net/covid-nineteen-vaccination. So there are lots of questions about whether PPS will mandate vaccines for its employees and students-serving partners. We continue to discuss different strategies with our labor partners about how to best protect our staff, our partners, and students in our buildings. Partners have been supportive of vaccination efforts for adults and students, and we will continue to work together to enhance our collective efforts on all fronts. We all know that another effective health strategy against COVID-19 is the usage of masks. As we start school on September 1st, PPS will follow the direction of the Oregon Health Authority, the Oregon Department of Education, and the Monoma County Public Health Department to require the use of masks by all students, staff, and partners while indoors. This includes school buses as required by the CDC. We'll encourage but not require masks for outdoor activities. We also want you to know that we have over one point seven million age-appropriate masks in stock, which we've made available to all PPS schools. And as you know, rules and guidelines and expectations are ever-changing. We're still working out the details on how our students will eat lunch, and play instruments, play musical instruments, and other aspects of the school experience. We have some of the best minds in student-centered people, including our school principals working out the logistics, and we expect to have more details on how we will implement safety protocols for eating and drinking, sports, performing arts, and other activities early next week. These decisions require us to carefully consider local health-guided state and federal regulations, and ultimately the practicality of operationalizing such decisions across eighty-one different schools. I'm now going to turn it over to Dan Young, our Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you Dr. Byrd. PPS will continue to implement regular cleaning procedures in all district facilities. Special attention.
Sorry, we're doing physical distance.
Hold on, I'm getting there. I can't do that. I'll start over. Thank you Dr. Byrd. Throughout the summer, our maintenance and operations staff have been working diligently to prepare school buildings to open on September 1st. One of the ways we are doing this is by working with school administrators to maintain three-feet physical distancing nose-to-nose between students to the extent possible. We know that the majority of our classrooms across our eighty-one schools are able to meet the three-feet guidance, and any room that cannot, we are working directly with school staff on how to best address each individual situation. There are a lot of variables when it comes to physical distancing. We have over three thousand classrooms across PPS, each with unique layouts, various shapes and sizes of desks, varying numbers of students in each classroom throughout the day, and of course fluctuating enrollment. As we prepare to welcome students back to the buildings, our principals will be able to share with parents and their community which rooms cannot meet the three-foot distancing, and strategies we will deploy to mitigate the spread of the virus. Next slide please. There we go. One of the most effective ways to lower the risk of exposure to the coronavirus is by ensuring proper ventilation. From the moment we started making plans to bring staff and students back into our buildings, proper ventilation has been a primary focus. We've made multiple enhancements to building ventilation and air filtration systems, including continuing to introduce outside air into the system by running the ventilation systems longer each day, and continuously throughout the day, so we start them about two hours earlier than normal, and run them two hours later than normal. We also have been exhausting air from the indoors to the outdoors by adjusting the building vents to bring in the maximum amount of fresh air, cleaning the air that is recirculated with HEPA filters in every classroom and on school buses, and over the summer we've been busy upgrading central air filters to MIRF-13 standards across our schools. To date, we're approximately seventy percent complete and expect to be one hundred percent complete by the first day of school. Our airflow and circulation strategies are based on guidance from the CDC, the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, as well as our partner, Certified Industrial Hygentist. Next slide please.
So you might remember last spring, as students and staff were coming back to in-person learning, we implemented, one hundred percent of our schools implemented symptomatic testing for students or staff who developed COVID-19 symptoms at school. We're currently planning with the Oregon Health Authority and our labor partners to implement a district-wide screen testing for unvaccinated students and staff. Those are two different programs I want to talk about today. In partnership, we're looking for ways to offer free COVID-19 screen testing to all unvaccinated K-12 teachers and staff to help reduce the spread of COVID-19 in schools. This program is provided by the OHA and will include free at-home weekly screening testing by mail to any unvaccinated public K-12 staff member, including volunteers. While vaccination status won't be verified at this time, all staff will be welcome to enroll and will receive instructions very shortly to do so. According to the OHA, a COVID-19 test kit will be mailed directly to the staff's home each week. The at-home COVID-19 test is performed by swabbing just inside the nose, the swab is then returned to the lab by mail, and results are returned within days to the employee or volunteer. Participating in the program and results are confidential, however, a positive COVID-19 test must be reported for contact tracing purposes. In a similar way, we are working to implement screen testing for students, even those without COVID-19 symptoms. The details and nuances of operationalizing these testing protocols are complex and being worked out currently, but we are committed to offering screening testing as part of our mitigation efforts to our students, and more information will be rolled out to our schools in the coming days and weeks. Even though we're exploring screen testing for COVID-19, we are also encouraging students and staff who are exhibiting COVID-19 primary symptoms to of course stay home, and we'll always ask families to consult with their primary care provider with any questions. We will continue to follow all local public health guidance and requirements regarding COVID-19 isolation and quarantine procedures. This includes students who feel ill, or staff members, will be sent to a symptom space, tested for COVID-19, and those who are test-positive will be quarantined. There's a procedure in place that the EMSD, the Monoma Education Service District, then contact, does, performs contact tracing, and notifies the family or employee when they may return to school. In alignment with RSSL, Ready School Safe Learners, students who do not need to quarantine if they were within three or more feet of a confirmed COVID-19 case, and both students were consistently and correctly wearing masks, symptom-free students and adults who are vaccinated do not have to quarantine after exposure. CDC guidance also states that people who are fully vaccinated and do not have COVID-19 symptoms do not need to quarantine after an exposure to someone with COVID-19. Dan?
As previewed, PPS will continue to implement regular cleaning procedures in all district facilities. Special attention by custodial staff will be given to high-touch surfaces throughout the day. Of course, any classroom outbreak of COVID-19 will result in comprehensive disinfection of areas per local and CDC guidance. In addition, our school buses will be cleaned and disinfected daily. I want to give a special thank you to our custodial staff, who have continued to show up in person throughout the pandemic, and they are eagerly awaiting the return of staff and students. We are currently staffed at three hundred and sixteen full-time and twenty part-time custodians, with about forty-four full-time vacancies. However, our human resources team is diligently working to bring on additional staff in time for the first day of school, including twenty new colleagues who will be joining us just this week. As we speak custodians, custodians are replenishing supplies and disinfecting products in all classrooms in accordance with our cleaning and disinfecting protocols. Next slide please. We also know that ongoing handwashing can prevent the spread of germs and avoid getting us sick. That is why we continue to provide ready access to soap, water, and hand sanitizer throughout our schools, including at the entrances to schools, lunch lines, and all classrooms. Our custodial staff are working in each school building to ensure each classroom is stocked with disinfectant and hand sanitizer at all times. We know that our schools serve as learning hubs in our community, that is why from the beginning of this pandemic, PPS has partnered with public health agencies to educate and promote COVID-19 vaccinations and other health and safety measures to protect against COVID-19. As the Chief Operating Officer, I know the importance of ensuring our staff and partners have access to COVID-19 health and safety trainings, that provide updated information and clear guidelines to meet the district's health and safety expectations. Our safety team is working through the details of these trainings, and will begin sharing those as early as this week when our school principals come back for a Leadership Institute Per state law, we plan on publishing our Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan on or before August 23rd, which will describe PPS's layered health and safety plan to limit the spread of COVID-19 this fall. We are also required to keep an updated communal disease management plan, which explains our emergency operation plans in addressing infectious disease during the pandemic, and you can find them online at pps.net.
Along with welcoming our students and staff back to our buildings, we're also excited to welcome visitors and volunteers back into our school buildings and central office building during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All visitors and volunteers will need to sign in and follow PPS health and safety protocols while on campus or on central office grounds. This includes being required to wear masks when indoors and around people, regardless of vaccination status, and those who are exhibiting COVID-19 primary symptoms should stay home. All people must sign in and out using our visitor and volunteer management system, so procedures that people are familiar with already, and ultimate discretion of visitors and volunteers at the school will be handled by the principal's office. In terms of cohorting, our elementary students are mostly in self-contained classrooms, we will maintain those cohorts as much as possible, including throughout the day. Our secondary, middle, and high school students, cohorting is really an impossibility just because of the schedule that they run, so we will not be cohorting those students.
So Directors, as you heard from my colleagues, we have a comprehensive set of health and safety measures against COVID-19. Of course, we are remaining nimble and adaptive to the changing guidance and circumstances, but firm in following the expertise of public health experts, all in service of our PPS community. As Superintendent Guerrero shared last week, quote, "As educators by profession, we have said we would be guided by public health experts, not politics, not the loudest expressed perspectives, nor popular opinion." Today's overview, we believe, lives into this commitment. Now, I know that you and many in our community want and should expect operational details from us. Thank you to those of you, both on the school board and our community, who have sent your questions, comments, suggestions, and compliments. Know that we have a team reading and working through to respond to these communications. In an effort to share more details about our health and safety measures for the new school year with our broader community, earlier today, we shared with families a new website, pps.net/backtoschool2021, where we will provide you access to our standard operating procedures, set of, a set of step-by-step instructions for how we expect to implement many of our health and safety measures this school year. We invite you, we invite everyone to send us your questions, your concerns, your suggestions, and your compliments via our Let's Talk platform, which you will see linked on that site as There we go. One of the best ways to disseminate information to our community is with answers to commonly-asked questions. Every day this week, we are, we plan on uploading and sharing via email new answers to commonly-asked questions. We know parents, students, and staff are anxiously looking for all the details and ways our schools plan to keep their students safe. We get it. As parents, uncles and aunts, cousins, siblings, and as PPS educators, we know and we care about the health and safety of every single one of our students. And our colleagues recognize that sharing more detailed information also builds collective trust. Again, I want to thank Director Bryn Edwards and the Audit Committee for today's presentation. We look forward to communicating the results of the audit with families, which we know will give parents, students, and staff another assurance that we are ready to welcome students back to school full-time. In addition to sharing and updating on a regular basis our answers to commonly-asked questions, we plan to communicate this information about our preparedness protocols. This includes, but is not limited to, regular e-communication, including on our website, social media, and our online engagement platform, Let's Talk, partnering with culturally-specific partners so that our families, especially our communities of color and linguistically-diverse communities have access to and understanding of these safety measures, building knowledge and providing communication tools to school administrators and educators to share with families and staff, and of course, you as elected school board members and representatives of our school community. You can help by sharing all the ways you and us are looking to keep students and staff safe this fall. Directors, before I turn it over to you for questions or comments, I want to reiterate that we are excited to see our students, educators, and partners for a new school year. As evidenced by the audit findings today, I am confident, I am confident that we have the team in place to implement the health and safety measures in accordance with public health guidance and in service of our students and staff. We are listening to public health guidance and are determined to prioritize a safe return to joyful learning in our classrooms, in our auditoriums, and in our playgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I have to say that I appreciate that we are all, you in particular, staff, operating in a really logistically challenging environment. The news changes every day, you have to operate in real time, you have to follow the news, so board members, I know that like me, we've received a lot of questions from community members and families about what next year will look like for students, including those of our own. We're looking forward to receiving the information. It's really important to emphasize what we just heard. Over the course of this next week, families will receive information that answers questions on topics like lunchtime and masking, and I appreciate that you shared the option for families to submit their questions and concerns, thereby creating a two-way information system rather than just a single one-way system, so we have a way for parents to interact with us and get answers in real time. And that mechanism, that two-way communication mechanism is via Let's Talk. I know this is a great way for us to track what people are concerned about and what they want to know, and a great way for families to get responses to their questions. PPS has a team of experts to respond to families through Let's Talk, which I can assure is way more beneficial than asking me and having me track down those answers. I have personally submitted a list of questions that I've heard from the community, I know some of my colleagues have as well, and I want to open up the floor to see if anybody has questions about what we just heard, additional questions, and if we, we're bringing questions forward from the community as well. I've heard personally people are interested in lunches, wondering if we can utilize outdoor space, the instruments and whether they'll be sterilized, and some of those issues that you've anticipated. Do we have any questions that we can ask staff right now from board members?
I have two questions. Thank you so much for all of this incredible work, and I want to go back to something on this presentation, I think it's like three slides back, but this, this to me captures exactly, Jonathan, there, we will remain nimble. This to me really captures what, what we're doing, and I really want people to hear this. We will remain nimble and adaptive to changing guidance, but firm in following the expertise of public health experts, I like that expertise and experts is in there like twice, and in service to our PPS community, right? That this is about serving our community, our kids, and that we're going to be adaptive and responsive, and I just so appreciate that. My two questions, the first, you said something about quarantining doesn't need to happen, Dr. Byrd, if masks are worn correctly, and I'm anticipating in that guidance that's coming out about masks on the, what day is that? That's on the 10th, is that today?
Today.
Today, talking about wearing masks correctly, and how, I have just questions about how we're going to continue, because I, I see a lot of people wear masks, and I see them wear them incorrectly, down over their noses, you know, or not fitting tight to their faces, and so just wondering how we're gonna really help people not just wear the mask, but wear them properly. And then I think one of the big questions I keep getting is about, are we going to require vaccines for students? Is that at all in the cards, or is there a timeline for that? And is there anything in the future about requiring vaccines for staff? So those are my two questions about vaccine requirements and wearing masks correctly.
Start with the masks. So of course, we are going to, every year when students come to school, we teach routines and practices in our classrooms. This is no different. Going to teach children to wear it over your nose, snugly around your chin, and you know, over your ears. Our teachers have been practicing that. The youngest students are very used to wearing masks out in public because they had to do it all spring and for most of the summer. So we'll continue to go over those routines with children, just as we teach them to line up for lunch, and just, you know, all those other routines that we teach throughout the school day. And then we'll also provide, we have, in addition to big people masks, we also have masks that are for children, so they are age-appropriate in terms of size. So we'll continue to provide those to schools.
And do we have both disposable and reusable masks, or are they all just disposable?
The ones we, oh yeah.
They're disposables.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, again, as we, once again, the report that came out this week about climate change, and as we, as a district, continue to be leaders, I know that several, like I'm wearing a Franklin mask, I know that several staff have PPS masks, it might be something to think about if, you know, as we think the pandemic may be with us for a long time, to provide every student with two or three reusable washable masks, and continue to provide disposable masks, because I know that some of our families don't have access to regular washing. So as we think about that.
Absolutely. To answer your second question about whether or not we are going to mandate vaccines for students, according to the, and I'm going to look at Liz, Laura, our general counsel, just in case I, looking at the ORS guideline, or ORS, the state statutes, it would be about a two-year process for the state to approve a mandate of COVID-19 vaccines. We're a unique state in that it provides a number of panels, and it's a big hoopla, if you will, at the state level to get approval for a full authorization of vaccines for students, or mandating, sorry, vaccines for students.
And then do we know for staff, if that's, I know that's not where we are right now, but is that something we're considering or looking at, or is that something you can say we won't have that conversation for six months, or it's just, it's one of the questions I'm getting a lot.
Absolutely. In terms of staff, we are in conversations with our partners, our labor partners in particular, about some of those next steps. What we know is that our partners have expressed throughout this pandemic the importance of making sure our students and our staff are fully vaccinated.
Thank you.
Director Green?
I just have a couple of questions, and it's probably, it's probably been answered. But you said, I want to know what is meant by "to the extent possible" when we start talking about social distancing? That's going to be one. So when we start talking about, we're going to keep people three feet apart to the extent possible, I'm really trying to understand that one. And then the second question that I have is around the concept, the idea that Ailey was, I thought we were going to, was that if my soup gets COVID, and then he goes home or whatever, and it comes back, he's got COVID, I don't have to quarantine because I may or may not have had my mask on, so I can still come back to school the next day? Or do I have to get a test or something that shows that, because it doesn't make, I'm not, the math is just not adding up for me, so I'd like some clarification around that? Because how do you know that I had my mask on properly? How do you know that I had it, you know, sealed up tight? How do you know that? How are you going to prove that I did all of those things if I'm not, so, because he could have gave it to me. He's sitting right next to me, and, you know, I don't trust him, he would do that.
It might be helpful to have some kind of if/then type scenarios to provide, you know, an if/then, right? If they're sitting together, and they're both wearing masks, and one desk's then.
I'm a scenario planner, so I have an exact tool that we can use to think through some of those things, so.
That's fantastic.
Appreciate that.
That's a great question.
And then I would just add that through the contact tracing process, they do interviews of students, so they say, was Dan, if Dan's the exposed person, was I with him for 15 minutes in contact like this, or was it just a passing in a hallway? So they, through the answers to people's questions for contact tracing, that's how they determine whether, you know, you're in close contact and require further quarantine. So there's a process that we go through.
Yeah, so to Director Green, I think what's important here to know is that the people that are doing the contract tracing, contact tracing, the folks that are determining whether folks have been exposed for a significant amount of time, these are public health experts. These are public health officials. These are nurses, health nurses that are provided by MESD, that are providing regular updates. So it's not just the layman saying, well, you didn't have your mask over, under, or over. You know, it's really making sure that we're listening and being guided by MESD. So that's why our partnership, if you look at our isolation section here, isolation and quarantine, if there is a case, we will follow MESDs in Monoma County. So really, at that point, this is why partnership, intergovernmental partnerships are so critical, working with MESD in Monoma County as the public health guidance and experts in our community.
So in that regard, will we be saying that until MESD clears you, you can't come back?
Correct. So we, well, we will continue to work with MESD. MESD is the one that provides guidance to us as staff about whether folks are clear to move forward.
Right. So what I'm saying is, if MESD says this person got COVID, are we saying until MESD comes back, everybody that was in the room at that time, or that was in three feet proximity of that person, you can't come back?
We will, so I think that's getting very detailed into the specific, I think that's part of a scenario. I would argue that we would rely on MESD to provide us direction on any specific case that would happen. So if you're talking about a specific classroom, if a student has COVID-19, then we would rely, as the educators, on public health in terms of next steps, whether or not we want to quarantine the entire classroom, whether we only need to quarantine the one student, or do we need to quarantine three or four? Again, we'll work with MESD and Monoma County to determine the specific next steps. So I can't give you, I don't want to give you an example that might be different at a different school, because I think every unique case will be worked on through MESD. Does that answer your question?
No, no. And maybe I'm not asking it right, because I guess what I'm, let's just say, I don't even care about the whole classroom right now. It's me. It's me. Me and this guy were, we were there, and he tested positive for COVID. And then I'm like, oh dang, that sucks to be you. And so they called me, and, you know, you know, or they're trying to figure this thing out or whatever. Do I get to keep coming back to school while they're figuring out the people on the list, and then they realize that, oh yeah, you were one of them? So I get to come back to school, because he caught it on Monday. So I get to come back to school on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then on Thursday, they realize, you know, oh, this is the guy, you know, you were talked to. So then they're calling me, trying to figure it out, and I'm a middle school kid, and so I don't really, was you around him 10 minutes or 15 minutes? I don't know, we was in class together, and I don't, I didn't even know he had it, you know, said, oh, that's messed up. And so do I get to go back to school on Friday now, while they're still figuring out whether or not I got it or not? Was I around long enough? Do I need to go get a test? Or do I have to go get a test before I can come back? I'm not talking about the whole class, just me, because I'm a snotty-nosed kid, and I just like being around other snotty-nosed kids.
Absolutely. So here's how I will answer that question. One of the things that we are doing is providing COVID-19 testing across the board, right? So we're doing screen testing, as we indicated in this slide here. Screen testing is for individuals without symptoms or exposure to COVID-19. So in this instance, I would, you know, again, I don't want to make assumptions on the table because I think every situation is going to be unique. In terms of this specific instance, so let's just say the superintendent contracted COVID, right? And so we would, what we would do operationally is contact Monoma County Health Department and follow their clear directions on how we should move forward with contact tracing, who are the people that were engaged in proximity with him, and then, you know, those are the follow-up, and the follow-up questions, masks. And so if the Monoma County Health official says, well, it seemed like you weren't sure about whether your mask was fully on, so maybe as a health expert, I think you should provide, you should get a test, a COVID-19 test, then we would follow that direction, right? So I think it's important to note that as educators, we are going to be listening to public health experts and guidance on specific steps, whether or not we need to quarantine you for X number of days, or whether or not you need to be in school for three days or four days, or you're allowed to come back in the day.
And then I would just add that we have experience from this, from the spring, when students were in hybrid instruction, and we had, so there's a team that convenes very quickly, communication has to go out within a certain amount of time. So this is, this doesn't linger on for days. So we had, instances in high school in the spring where we had a team working sometimes till seven or eight at night to gather the information and then make communication to families. So in one particular case, it was, you know, 50 families had to be notified because it was an athletic incident. So it happens, and there's a timeline for these things to happen, and we have had experience with it in the spring semester.
So Director Green, one thing that I will offer, and I don't have it with me today, is a communication protocol that we've implemented, a flow chart, if you will, that looks at what happens when there is a case, and this step-by-step process that we as a district will take. So we'll share that with you and the rest of the board, as well as the community.
So you guys said that you guys are going to be using health officials to help you guys mitigate this stuff, right? Who does the contact tracing? When I looked on the information you guys sent out, it looked like there was, the contract tracing is based on attendance in the classroom, and then as they move to each classroom, then there's another attendance that. So following what Mr. Herman is saying, I mean, Mr. Green is saying, Director Green, sorry about that, sir. Is that protocol that you just talked about will have to go for multiple classes? And multiple people at the same time?
So our.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. And then the turnaround time that you spoke about, is that 24 hours? Is that three hours? Is that 48 hours? That's my question.
Thank you. Okay, so to address the first part, so yes, our attendance is taken electronically, and so we have a record of that. So even if you're in a class and you go to, let's say you need to go to another teacher's room for intervention or enrichment, you're going to sign out of your class, or even to go to the restroom, you're going to sign out of the class. So we have protocols in place for that. We had them last spring, so we could track the movement of students through the buildings and for this very purpose, for contact tracing, in case there was a significant exposure. The time in the hallways between classes, that is not a significant exposure because that time is limited and you're passing, and so you shouldn't be congregating for 15 minutes, it's only about a five-minute period on average. So yes, if you are traveling from class to class, we would have to keep a record of, we have electronic record of that. And the timeline, I do not know off the top of my head, but I'll get it for you and write. It is a matter of hours, though, that we have to convene the team and trace the steps of the student to know where they were and make contact. I'll get that for you. There's a timeline that I can send to you.
Yeah, so the easy steps, and I have them in front of me, and again, I'll share this with the broader, with the board and the community. So the moment that a student, a family, or a PPS Health Service Coordinator reports a COVID-19 event to school staff, whether that's because someone tested positive for COVID-19, and/or there was close contact exposure to confirmed or presumptive positive case of COVID-19, if that happens, school staff will immediately, immediately, like the moment, so I had, we've seen cases across our building, and we are responsible for reporting immediately, alerting the building administrator and school nurse. School health officers are also trained to share COVID-19 events with the school nurse. Building administrator will coordinate with the school nurse to establish contact with the student and family, and immediately fill out a student COVID-19 form with students and families. Again, I'm reading step-by-step guidance here. Building administrators will inform their supervisor that a protocol has been activated, and employee names will remain confidential, or in this case, employee's name will be, remain confidential. If directed by nurse consultant to cancel class or school events prior to completion of investigation, we have some talking points to notify potentially exposed individuals, and they complete the COVID-19 school exposure form. We also have, the next step will be that building administrators will receive either an individual debrief email or an invitation to a COVID-19 management team meeting regarding exclusion of individuals and communication resources. Number seven, direct supervisors will provide exclusion dates to the employee or the students immediately via email and follow-up with a phone call. If close contacts are identified, oop, sorry, just lost it here. Number six, building administrators, no, I already wrote that. Seven, read that one, no, seven, direct supervisor provides exclusion dates to employees immediately via email and follow-ups with a phone call. Number eight, if close contacts are identified within the building, nurse consultant will provide exclusion guidelines and communication for those individuals also. Direct supervisor support employees' return to in-person work after quarantine or isolation has been completed, and employees have been fever-free for 24 hours and other symptoms are improving. Again, that's just the adult case scenario. We have a student case scenario that I will share via email tonight, just so you have this. This is what we've implemented in the spring, and I just want to make sure before I send it out that it's going to be, it's going to meet the fall, because again, you know, the guidance is shifting. But that was the guidance for how we implemented when cases were in our schools in the spring.
That's great. I wanted to share the address for those that are calling and are watching. The Let's Talk address is pps.net backslash contact. I was really delighted to see that the webpage can be, is available in six safe harbor languages. There's also a high-contrast version for people that have a visual impairment. And as I went through, I can ask a question, submit a comment, a suggestion, or a compliment. So I encourage people to submit compliments. It's okay to submit.
They make us feel good.
You don't have to always be gnarly. You can say, you know, good job, someone. Seriously, I'm going to do it, but I encourage other people to do it too. It's always great to catch people doing something right. And the superintendent, everybody in the room, we could all submit a compliment, and the public should as well. There is a lot going right.
Chair, thanks for the plug on the Let's Talk platform. We actually started piloting it internally over this past school year, but now seems like a great time to really maximize its potential. You can click on any one of the Let's Talk symbols on our webpages, and it'll allow you to sort of sort through and direct your concern or question, or it'll be sorted for you, and it allows us to internally track that a response in a reasonable amount of time gets responded to whoever submitted it, and allows us to gather by theme what those questions and concerns are, so we can continue on a rolling basis to update our FAQs, which you saw on an almost daily basis is going to be posted.
And Superintendent Guerrero, thanks for that plug on Let's Talk. The additional piece to know on Let's Talk, and the reason I'm confident in my ability to say that we have a team dedicated to answer, responding to those calls, is that the difference between when we get emails from our community is that we get thousands of them daily. You all get hundreds of them, maybe not thousands, hundreds of them daily. And so our ability to compartmentalize and think about how we best answer, you know, hundreds and thousands of questions, Let's Talk gives us that opportunity to make sure that there are folks, you know, two, three, four layers down the organization that are able to support us in answering those questions, and do that with a customer service orientation, which is really important to us, as you know, in our strategic plan, and as you know, in who we are as an organization.
So a question I have, if somebody, say I submitted a question tonight, what would the, and at a certain point, every question is going to have been asked. I mean, so there's not going to be any new questions probably at a certain point. How long is it going to take? Will somebody get like a personalized answer, and when?
Sure.
And if you provide a compliment, do you get a faster answer?
I can actually look in the dashboard to see which ones get responded faster, but that's a separate comment for another day. So I don't have specifics in terms of the turnaround. I can get that to you. As you know, we're getting, like, just when we announced this just an hour ago, we got like 300 comments, right? Or emails or messages, if you will, just within like a couple hours. And so part of our team, you know, is also. And so part of our team, you know, is also putting on Leadership Institute, putting on a number of things. So it's going to be a couple of days for us to respond. That's why our commentingly asked questions are being rolled out every day this week, because what we're looking at is what are the questions that you're all getting? So cafeteria, lunch, instruments. And so putting those on, because we, like you said, we know generally what the questions are at this point. And so making sure that either we have the answer and are able to put that in the comment, comment answers and questions, or answer them separately.
So just, I have some actual content questions, but along those same lines, like at the last meeting, Director Hollins raised this, is, you know, we're out in the community and people view like, "You should know, you're on the school board." Like, "What am I doing with X?" So how are you, how are we going to share information to a broader group? So if people just go, not everybody's going to go to a website. It's not always accessible. How are we going to use a variety of different mediums to get information out? And also, I think in, just, I know, just the feedback I've gotten over the last week is like, hey, people want answers also in public forums, because it allows for follow-ups and, you know, just maybe do a click-down. So I'm wondering what you're thinking in addition to this.
In addition to the information that you can find on our website, will also be, schools are hosting back-to-school events. You know, there's textbook pickup. There's all kinds of things that happen right before school starts. So that's an opportunity for our principals to communicate to families exactly what, you know, school-specific things are going to happen. There's questions, you know, "Where do I drop my child off? Can I come in the, can I come in the school to bring my child?" All those kinds of questions and protocols are handled often at the school level. So there'll be lots of back-to-school opportunities for people to get their immediate questions answered from their school principal and teacher.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because like back-to-school nights usually happen after school's been in session for a couple weeks?
Right, but there's communication that happens leading up to returning to school. So at high schools, there's events for, you know, freshman come on to-
Get your schedule.
Yeah, all that, all that kind of stuff. So that's an opportunity for the school to communicate directly with their, with their families. They also, they also send messages out, you know, all school communities send their own communications out.
Absolutely. As we know, you know, our schools are community hubs, right? They're, they're, they're the hubs of information for many of our families, especially the folks that are not, you know, going on web, on a website every day. So we're, we're really making sure this week, you know, with our administrators coming back, that we're beginning to provide those, that training and that orientation for how they, as leaders, as school administrators and folks who are running their buildings, are implementing these health and safety guidance with fidelity. So that's going to be number one. I think number two, as you know, we, we are contracted with racially, our racial equity and social justice partners such as SEI, Latino Network, ERCO, Apano, you name the organization. We are going to be working with them. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with our partners, our RESJ partners. It's our quarterly update that we, we have on a regular basis, where we talk about a number of things. Part of that conversation will be giving them a sense, an orientation about what is being laid out in terms of health and safety measures for our schools, because we know that these organizations, these culturally-specific organizations are also trusted partners and trusted organizations that people rely on. So while they may not like an email, or, or, you know, people might not prefer an email from Dan Young or Jonathan Garcia, they may get one, they may, may resonate with a text from one of their coordinators at SEI. So that's a sec-
Especially in their, in their own language. And Jackson has been following this whole presentation from our website in Mandarin.
Oh, awesome.
Which is pretty cool.
That is really cool.
Every community has an ante. And that's like the news, you don't even need to read the newspaper. They get everything from, I think the RESJ partners serve, serve that function, being trusted, you know, culturally appropriate messengers.
So absolutely. So, you know, to that point, Director Pat, or Chair DePass, I think it's important that, you know, to, and again, this is why I appreciate the number of questions that we're getting from directors, because you want to know the, the details, because folks also trust you, right? And so how do we make sure that we, as a collective, are working together to understand what our staff is putting in place, our operational staff, our school principals are putting in place to keep our students safe? And so, you know, we'll, we'll continue to share information via email, via other social communications. And again, at the end of the day, we know that person-to-person communication and with organizations that they trust and people that they trust, that our, our communities will be well-informed ahead of September 1st.
I will say, Chief Garcia, that information like the way this is presented is tremendously helpful, because it's, we all know it's human nature that in a void, in the absence of people, of human nature, people tend to assume the planning isn't taking place. No one's considered, you know, these various categories and what we're going to do here. And so just knowing that, you know, this is a, a rolling exercise, there's so much to understand and so much to communicate, but to let people know when they can expect that, I think is, is really important. I had a, I had a very quick question, and this general counsel large might be for you, because you've been tracking the regulatory environment. So I understand that piece about mandatory vaccinations, even though I don't know the extent to which there could be a gubernatorial override of that. I think that's also quite possible. But we know that just in ordinary times, we have quite a lot of variability in the vaccination rates in our various school communities. So, so what is our, is our ability to ask about vaccination status for students and staff?
I think we are able to inquire about vaccination status. Where we have to be very sensitive is when we get, how we respond to the answers we get. So if someone says that they have not been vaccinated, we have to be very careful about asking why in the follow-up questions.
But it, it seems like really important information to me, because it's going to, it's going to show us that we have a different environment in different school communities, you know, to a greater or lesser degree. So I, I would like to hear more about what we do there.
I, I can tell you that, that there are several conversations happening at the staff level about how to obtain that information and what the mechanisms are to have as few touches as possible to get it into the system, so that when it's in, it's updated and it's in the right place. So those conversations and work streams are happening to understand what the menu of options looks like before any decisions are made. So I think, I would say more to come. I don't know if there are other-
And then my other related question is whether we are, we have any plans with any of our partners to offer vaccinations onsite during the school year, especially in our, you know, high schools and middle schools?
Absolutely. So we are currently doing two strands of work on that front. On one front, we're looking at, we're working with our middle school and high school principals to identify key events in their school communities where we can promote and, and have access to the vaccine. So that, that's one thing that's already underway. In addition, we are anticipating, as you all know, that our students under 12 will get vaccinated, will have access to the vaccine at some point in the school year. And so we are actually in conversation with local health providers to think about a mobile clinic that actually goes through every single one of our elementary schools as that gets outlined. And so more details to come on that. We are still in early planning stages. Obviously, we don't know when the FDA is going to emergency approve the, the vaccine, but we want to anticipate and be ready to go on day one when vaccines are, when students are, under 12 are eligible to receive that vaccine. So really, two strands of work. One is to make sure that kids that are over 12 have access and to the, to the vaccine at their schools. And when our students under 12 have that authorization, we're able to provide that as well.
I have one more thing. One, I want to say thank you. The, the information that you're planning to get to me as far as like the, the step-by-step, just hearing what you're doing with the, with the adults, I'm, I'm really excited to see what we're going to be doing with the, with the kids. So I'm excited about that part. I just wanted to come back to the, because I, I think I spent so much time giving my soup COVID. That I, I never really fell back to what we meant by, when we look at the classroom sizes to the extent possible, three feet. So really getting some clarification around that, because there is going to be a lot of pushback on cramming everybody into a classroom and then saying, "Well, we tried, but, you know, we, we had so many people come back that we wanted to get them all in here, but we tried." So to the extent possible, we did three feet. But now we're down to one and a half. So what do we mean by that? And then, I'm sure y'all have got it, because y'all in NASA, for God's sake. So let's go.
So thank you for the question. So a typical classroom separation is about three feet anyway. So that's, we know that by looking at the data that we had last year, we looked at our classrooms and said, you know, we had to do six feet of separation. Then, so you could roughly double that. But we looked to see how that would play out. Now that we have students loaded into the system, our principals are coming back to work, we'll be doing a sanity check of that data to make sure that like in this classroom, you know, this fits just fine. In this classroom, not so much. We're going to have, in fact, I talked to a principal yesterday who said, "I'm good, except for I have one section of history that I'm not going, it's not going to work." So we're going to have to move them to the library in this case. So they're going to relocate that teacher for that one class period to the library, so that they can maintain the distance. What we found last year, and I'll turn it over to Dan here in a second, is that in, when we had, when we were, even at our most well-attended hybrid programs, when the distance was six feet, we were able to solve all the problems within the school building where there were space issues. So we had to relocate some teachers from their tinier, their smaller classrooms to larger, like, multipurpose spaces, but we were able to do that. And so we anticipate that, that is still the case. When we ran the data last spring about three feet, we, we believe that's the case in nearly all cases. So, but we're going to do the check with our principals when they have actual students loaded into the schedules to see how that works. And principals already have been working on that.
Yeah, I can just add, maybe a little process. So we started looking at potential capacity issues back in June. And so what we've done is we have linked up a facilities representative over the summers and working with area senior directors for them to identify where they think there might be some capacity issues. And we started to get some early estimates for enrollment and where we might see some acute issues. And so what we have is our facilities, and then we have the, the area senior directors. And then now with the principals coming back, they're going to be working directly to resolve those problems at each individual school, because they're going to be unique. Some situations, it might just simply be, well, we could, two teachers could switch classrooms. Or you might need to repurpose some space, or you might need some unique furniture. So it's really a site-by-site basis, but that's how we do it. We really, we try to link up our facilities with the school-based staff and have them problem-solve. And we were able to do a really good job of that in hybrid, and I think we're going to be able to do it again.
And just, I mean, are we three feet right now? I mean, I feel like not quite.
Two feet.
Or like two feet?
This is how you can tell you're three feet apart.
How?
It's three feet, three feet nose to nose.
Okay, so I'm three feet from Andrew. Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of it, is I'm really bad at judging how far three feet is. It's really not that far.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm a real simple guy. You get a piece of ABS pipe and cut it and you walk around.
Please do not give our-
If we do that from classroom to classroom and we go around, I was in, we were, we were in Vegas when they were, you know, back when nobody was there. But one of the things they were trying to do is they had a piece, they literally had a piece of pipe and they set it from one table to the next table. And they went around on every angle to make sure that it was six feet apart, because they wanted to keep people there, but they wanted to keep people safe at the same time. And so they even went as far as to set the pipe on the table to make sure that even here, that people aren't going to be with it. Now, if they can do that there, because they want people to gamble, I'm sure we can do that in a classroom, because we want people to learn. We need to figure out something, so that we can give the families that are, I know are bombarded needs. So if, like you say, if I'm getting 100 a day and you're getting 1,000 a day, then we need to come up with something that's sensible to the, to the parents that's sitting at home with questions, that says, "This is what we've done." I don't care if we got to make a video that says, "This is what we're doing in every classroom, so that we can ensure that your kid is going to be safe and at least three feet apart. And based on these numbers, this is how many people we're going to be able to fit into a classroom, because they're not going to understand the logistical blueprint that he's put out, but they will understand a stick that says three feet and says, this is, this is what it is."
I, I think we need to get all of our students like a little harness with pool noodles, right? So they can just run around whacking each other with a pool noodle three feet apart.
Well, I think the ABS pipe is budget-friendly.
Yeah, a little harder. Pool noodles are less, like, to cause serious injury for children.
I think what, what I'm getting at, and I, I believe what the community is wanting us to get at, is these, we need to instill confidence. The same way I believe this right here, this, just this layout of where they're going to get, when they're going to get responses. Because I, I believe that people will see that and what they're going to be doing is waiting on the day, so that they can see when I'm getting a response. I'm going to, I should turn it off, whatever. Maybe they can hear me. But they'll, they'll be able to look at that and say, "Okay, I'm going to get a response about this issue on this day." And that gives them that sense of hope, that one, I'm going to get an answer, that I know that they're working on it. And then if I don't like it on that day, then this is the day that I complain. Or this is the day that I, this is the day that I comment and say, "You did a fantastic job. Thank you for answering that question for me. I really appreciate it." But it's, it's laid out so that there's no guesswork. If we give them the same thing when it comes to the distance, then because in, in my mind, and I, I'm, I'm trying to be for the, you know, the, the parent that's not really got the time to figure out all this other stuff, all I can see is 30 to 40 kids excited to come back, rushing into a classroom, not washing their hands for 20 seconds like they're supposed to, coughing on everything, just happy to be around each other and bringing home COVID to somebody else. And so if we can make it plain, I'm even sitting here thinking, "I'm glad she brought up that we're not three feet apart, because I don't feel like we are." And then I'm looking at y'all, every one of y'all gave each other COVID. So why don't we have a longer desk in here that has plastic dividers in between? And then we're, "Oh, it's because of the mask. The mask is only helping you keep what you've got, but stuff creeps out." Now, I don't trust none of this stuff.
Director Green, if I, if I may, I mean-
And I'm going to shut up talking, because it's after nine o'clock.
Well, and, yeah, I just want to, I want to just remind everybody that my goal is always to get out here on time. And in my mind, we are ending about 31 minutes ago. This is an important topic, and we have a way to communicate back and forth. And I think Director Brim Edwards, I'm sensing, has a comment. You do, don't you, or question? And I would, I'd like us to be mindful of your time and your time. I don't think anybody loves a 12-hour day.
Well, appreciate it. And I just want to make one comment, Director Green, I think is really important. And, and we've heard this loud and clear from our public health experts. There isn't one single mitigation strategy that prevents COVID-19. It is a set of layered measures that we were put in place. So, yeah, if we put three-foot distancing, you know, and that's the only thing, of course, you know, that's going to create a lot of chaos. But as you can see on this, you know, and again, this is one representation and one image to look, to consider. You know, we are looking at a number of layers that I think, you know, according to public health, right? Whether we're looking at the CDC, or we're looking at Multnomah County Health, or we're looking at the state of Oregon, OHA. You know, these are experts that have dedicated their life to really saying, "These are the things that will prevent." Now, of course, you know, we're seeing breakthrough crisis, we're seeing other, so we, we want to be realistic. Of course, we're going to see cases. But the reality is, if we as a school system implement these with fidelity, right? So, yeah, the student didn't get, they're, they're hand-washed. You know, they, they washed it for 15 seconds, not 20. But because we, you know, we did, we're, we're disinfecting, you know, classrooms more often or spaces more often, that may help. And so I just kind of want to keep that context in, in place, that it is going to be a layered set and not one or the other. And so I think, I think for our community, it's going to be important that we're not putting one over the other and saying, "This one's better, or this one's better." It's, it's the set of measures that we're putting in place. measures that we're putting in place. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, that makes sense. Again, communication is key.
Absolutely.
Communication is key. And people, you know, perception is reality.
Absolutely.
So if I perceive that you're not doing something, they guess what? I don't care what you're doing. You're not doing anything.
Absolutely.
So what we have to do, and what we have a responsibility of doing, is not only, not only doing the thing, but making sure that we're putting every measure in place to change the perception that the community has about what we're doing by being as we are. Again, I like some of this stuff. I feel like we just need to yell it from the rooftops more transparently, this is what we're doing. Like I said, I like your skill-
I love all this stuff. All of it.
I do. But, like you said, but like the skill, the same way you're doing that, we, we have to get this out. Because otherwise, what's going to happen is, as we get closer to school, we're going to have more and more people sitting in here with signs that they're holding up to say, you suck, and you're a terrible person, and you don't care about my kids, and you want us all to die. And then you're going to have on the other side of the room saying, you know what, my son can get it, just let him go back. I don't care, just put him back in school. You're going to have all these different opinions, because no one knows. And so, again, I, I'm here to make sure that I, I speak out for the people that I'm, I'm supposed to represent.
Well, Pastor, maybe, oh, I was going to say Director slash Pastor, maybe we can look at our local churches to, to think about how we disseminate some of this information. So we can-
As you should.
Turn around, more information on-
As you should.
The faith's covered.
We have a couple pastors here.
Faith-based. Couple of denominations right up here.
Directors, we really do appreciate all the questions tonight. Hopefully, you're going to see the barrage of communications that you've already started to see commence. As we're sitting here, I, I'm glad to hear that we want to do everything possible to protect our students, our employees, and do as much as we can. There are other school board meetings happening right now in other places in the state, and I know that they're having a much different conversation. So I'm very glad, I, I'm thankful and grateful to be in a community that want, that really wants to do everything it can. So we, none of us want a disruption to learning for our students. We want to keep all of our adults as safe as possible, and we want to make sure that that helps the community. So we applaud the efforts by our local county and state-level leaders to, to exercise every tool that they have, because this isn't just a Portland issue that, that affects the health here. So stay tuned and look forward to, to much more information, and this is very helpful in refining our messages. So tonight's just, just another dose.
Thank you, Superintendent. I know Director Brim Edwards has a question.
Thank you. So I just want to go back to last week. There was two issues, and I just, that were raised, that I want to hark back into. One was the testing, and there's a big evolution this week, and I think that's really important, because a lot of people were asking about that. Why are we only doing symptomatic testing? So that pivot is an important pivot to note, to note, because if people don't see the new brochure, they won't know that we've pivoted on that issue. And the other issue, and this is a little bit to Director Green's comment about communication, but I ask about the number of cases. And I want to thank staff for getting that information, because between, the information we got was between June 21st and August 7th, there's been 19 cases. We should think about the thousands of kids we have out participating. To me, it's, it's a confidence building. One, we, we know when and where there were cases, and given our connections with the Multnomah County and the contact tracers, that we can plan for that. And I think the more that, and I'd like, I know on the website, there's a, what's happening in the county, but to know what, understand what's happening in PPS, I think also will be, provide confidence and also for the, for the board, give us information on just our ability to speak with confidence of what's happening. So I, I would just hope that before school starts, we get some sort of dashboard, just pulling out the data from OHA, so that we, we have that. But again, looking at the numbers that you all provided from this summer, to me is a really reassuring. There's not these huge outbreaks among our programs. It looks like, you know, kids are getting vaccinated, our, you know, school staff are being vaccinated, they're wearing masks, and it's working, because the numbers look pretty low.
I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Director Brim Edwards, and I will, I will acknowledge that there was a lull, a lull in our uploading of the, of those numbers on a weekly basis. We were doing it pre-summer. And so, of course, we want to make sure that our community understands what is happening in our classrooms. So you have my commitment that you will see that updated on a weekly basis. We already, we get that information as staff and as leadership, so we know what's happening. And so, again, wanting to make sure we're, we're sharing with our community and you, the directors, what is happening regarding COVID cases.
Great, thanks.
You know, I just, on that point, I, I'm not going to disagree with either of you said, but how that data is presented is really important. And, you know, even, even Director Brim Edwards, when you sort of said, you know, the 19 cases, you know, in our programs, there are 19 people who attended our programs who were diagnosed with COVID. We have no idea, you know, whether these people have contracted it, and, and most likely, they have not. And, and the reason why I think it's really important is because even last spring when we reopened, there was public comment, and we got emails around, you know, three kids have caught COVID at, you know, this elementary school. Well, they, they didn't. Three kids got COVID in the community and were tested. And in some ways, it was actually having them in our programs, right, who we were able to, to, to define in a way that not. So I just, I, I'm all for transparency. I love dashboards. It's really, really love them. I've got one up on my screen right now.
He does.
So I think it's great, but, but how we put that in context is important.
Absolutely.
Because there will be people who are going to look at that, and they're going to say, you're telling me 19 kids got COVID?
I was trying to summarize, because I was feeling the-
Right. I know, I know, and I just, this is, yeah, I just, it's a really-
I needed to go by without acknowledging that we got the information.
Yeah.
And so, point.
Yeah.
Yes, and I also just want to clarify, I'm happy to be here all night, if we need to. But no, it isn't. I want to be respectful of everyone's time here. So if we have no further business, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Herman has something.
Chair, since we are a, a learning organization, I, I just want to say quickly, partly to, to celebrate a couple of our, our two new board members, but as a member of District of the Council of Great City Schools, as you know, and you saw in the summary of services and support that we receive as a school district, that includes supporting school governance training. And a couple summers ago, all of the board members made the trek out to Harvard, my alma mater, to participate in a, a week-long training. And I'm really glad that our two newest board members, while they couldn't do it in person, went through the content. And so I wanted, I, I was, I was hoping that they would hold up their, the, the recognitions that they received that just came in the mail.
Woo-hoo!
You graduated from Harvard.
And, and I love to be able to say that everybody's been to Harvard at this dais.
Jackson will be there soon.
But it, it would be great to hear what a, what a takeaway perhaps might be, because it's, it's something that we try to do at the end of every board member meeting, any learnings or conferences out there, and I'd love to hear that the investment was worthwhile.
Thank you so much for that. And that, you also get a little button on your LinkedIn profile that says that you went to Harvard. Can impress your parents and all that. Yeah, it, it does-
I'm excited about it. I, we were upstairs, and when he, we handed it to me, I was like, man, this is impressive. You know, this is, I can now tell my, my kids, me and, me and Gareth, I'm about, I can tell my kids, I got a certificate from Harvard. That means something.
I see the thumbs down over there now.
Yeah. But, but no, I, I will say, it was, we, they went over a lot, and I got a lot from it. I, I went in thinking that it was going to be one way. I left out thinking something completely different, because I thought, this is just going to be a bunch of, you know, eggheads talking, and they're just going to be doing their thing, and they're just up there. But when we start going through the case scenarios, I think it's partly why I, I, I look at some of the stuff like this, is because you can't just look at it from the, the, the surface of what was the issue. They start making you dig down as to why did it happen? And, okay, well, why did that happen? And what could have been, what could have been a mitigator, what could have been changed early in that could have prevented this from happening much later on? And so as we started diving, going deeper down, you know, we start seeing, well, this person, you know, they, they weren't even supposed to be messing with the report. They weren't even supposed to be looking at something. It was, it was never theirs, and then they never turned it into the right person. And then, oh, they put the wrong, this person, they don't even care about the work that they're doing. So why would they be the ones in charge of, like, safety? And they want to talk about plane. And so it was, when we started looking at all those different pieces, and then relating that to how the work that we're doing on the board, and what we're going to be thinking about, that's what I believe helps me, helps move me to say, okay, you know, where are we with this? And this is important, because if we don't start talking about this stuff now, then it's almost like we don't care that the next pandemic could be here. So we have to act as if and make plans for the next big pandemic. Like, this Delta variant could be the one to take us all out. And so what are we doing right now to ensure that everything that needs to get done is getting done when it comes to our kids?
Okay, thank you, Herman.
And that's where I'm at.
On that cheery note.
That's where I'm at, man. So he asked me to do this. I didn't even want to do this. I'm a preacher by nature. I don't need more opportunity to talk.
Really? Okay, we are adjourned.